Good morning, one and all. We are streaming out to social media. So if you would all like to start your videos and we'll get some audio tests, that would be phenomenal.
Good morning, Frank. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Councilwoman Schaff.
Thank you.
Biggest, biggest one right now is Dave Brennan because we had some issues with him last night. Dave, it seems like we're having the same type of issues today. So we're going to have you go ahead and call in again. And then immediately following this, Dave, I'll hop on the line with you and maybe we can get that resolved. Mr. Persinger, it's my understanding you have a presentation to give, so you have screen sharing ability as well.
Great. Thank you. You can call me John, too.
Thanks.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Hello there. I think we're ready to start the appearance for John, too. John, you there?
I'm here. Yes, sir.
Hi, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Everybody's aboard, so if you're ready to talk to us.
We don't hear you. Are you unmuted?
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, but your audio is coming in a little echoey due to the fact you're not wearing headphones. Just.
I don't see Mr. Witherspoon this morning.
Is Mel trying to get in or does he need a wake up call?
Mel just under the room. I'm bringing him in now.
Liz here, too? David.
Slide your screen and it'll... Sometimes you slide your screen and you can see who's with us and who isn't. Morning, Melvin.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, all.
Hello, Mr. Witherspoon.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome John Persinger today. Thank you very much, John, for attending and willing to give us an update on everything that you're working on that you'd like to talk to us about today. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for having me. I know it's, it's definitely been a, it's a very challenging time. I know you all have your playful and have had for the last year or so with the pandemic. So I appreciate you taking a few minutes to give me the opportunity to present this morning. And as always, I want to be available to answer any questions. So at any point in time, just feel free to, to interrupt me. Before I get started, I wanted to double check. I wasn't sure if there was someone else presenting and should I go until 8:45 or did you want me to go until a later period?
I think you'd only win three game here.
For the most part, how much time do you need? Whatever time, whatever time you need, John, you are the only guest we have this morning.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. And I'm going to share my screen here to pull up this presentation. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Well, I wanted to walk you through kind of where we're at and what to expect in the upcoming months and years ahead. But I wanted to kind of start by reorienting everyone. So you were aware of what we're working on. When we got informed, the board done the really tough job of raising money and had tasked us with figuring out how much we could leverage that amount for and what we could afford to acquire and redevelop, knowing that not every property in downtown needed to be redeveloped and not every property we could afford to acquire. So we settled on a number of just over 100 million. We looked at other cities and able to leverage their amounts for about a three to one ratio. We had, the board had raised just over 27 million for the equity fund. So we thought 100 million would be a pretty good target for us. And with that 100 million, we thought we could be able to afford to acquire and redevelop these 12 properties that are right in the heart of downtown. This is, the green area is Perry Square. So you're looking in North Park Row and you're looking at the middle here is the corner of Fifth and State. And with these 12 projects, they are going to be a total of 477,000 square feet of new and revitalized space. There'd be about 100,000 square feet of commercial space. Most of that will be retail space. We had had some space, about 10,000 square feet reserved for commercial office space. We've been hearing from the Chamber and other economic development partners, the demand for grade A class off, class A office space. But I would say out of everything that we're doing in light of COVID, that seems, that demand seems to be the weakest right now. There still seems to be a lot of demand for retail space and for residential units. With residential units, as of right now, we have about 140 planned over these next three years. We'll come in different, we'll have about 44 this year, then we'll have another 50 to 60 in 2022, and the final 50 to 60 in 2023. In addition to the commercial space and the residential spaces, we are planning a 340 space parking garage. This will sit, if you're looking at this map here, it's number two C. We wanted to sit in the middle of the block and to be hidden from the street view. Parking garages, you can screen, you can do public art projects, but generally they're not the most aesthetically pleasing thing to look at. And so I'll go through and show you some updated renderings, which hides that parking garage in the middle of the block. So it enhances the street life by having retail wrapped around it. Now, starting with the first block, North Park Row, we are turning this into a culinary arts district. And we want to do that for a few reasons. We look at everything through economic lens and a social impact lens. And from an economic lens, we knew that we've got great culinary chefs and food and beverage and hospitality business owners here in Erie. We wanted to showcase their talents, not only for the community, but draw to be, draw people from around the region to downtown Erie by showcasing the great talent that we have in this community. With regards to social impact, we know that there's been a need for a downtown grocery store for years. We are sitting in one of the US Food and Agriculture designated food deserts. So we wanted to address that and we think we found some partners to make that happen. But let me go through these blocks, this block here. Here's a rendering of what the block will likely look like when all said and done. We're trying to restore the facades. We have some brickwork to finish. We've had some cracks in facade, so we've had to redo facades. We want to bring back some nice storefronts so people can see the life inside these buildings. If you're looking at the block, there will be a food hall at the east end of the block. There'd be a connection eventually through to the market, which where, which is where the grocery store will be at the west end of the block. Food hall is in the former Park Place Sherlocks. Market is in the former Dispatch Building. Here is a rendering of what it will look like on the inside for the food hall. We announced the vendors back, eight of the nine vendors back in October. We, if you haven't seen them, we've got them on the food hall website, flagshipcityfoodhall.com, but it's a great collection of diverse vendors. We think that there's something for everything. We did announce only eight of the nine because we wanted to hold one space open, knowing that there were chefs and a lot of food and beverage operators whose plan changed because of COVID. They had to shutter restaurants. They had extension plans. And so we wanted to keep one available in case someone want, during plans and wanted to take the food hall into consideration as a future location. We went through another public application process. We got a number of great applicants. We will hopefully make a decision on, in a public announcement about that final venue in a few weeks. You'll see inside here that these stalls are all kind of uniformed in their design and layout. Be, if you look above where the wood is, there would be the opportunity for the vendors to put in their own branding. We wanted to keep these stalls somewhat uniform in the sense, in the hope that they will turn over and that there will be chefs who will rotate out because we hope that there will be a chef who comes in here, is wildly successful, and wants to go on and start their own restaurant. We think that's a win for everybody. Going across to the west end of the block, this is a glimpse of what the market is going to look like. And we call it a market, but it will essentially be similar to a grocery store. You'll have everything that you would need to live here, from stable supply of fresh, healthy foods to home products like toilet paper and paper towels. We are not required by any regulatory authority to demand that our vendors who are going to go into the market and accept SNAP. But going back to our social impact, we are asking them to accept SNAP because of, we know that our residents down here and residents in the surrounding neighborhoods who will want to shop, and we want to make this open and available to socioeconomic backgrounds. Here's another glimpse of what the market will look like on the inside. Now going over to block two, this is where we acquired service parking lots from Gannon. We acquired a parking lot from McDonald's. We acquired a former closed franchise from McDonald's. All this open space allows us to put in three new buildings. As I mentioned at the beginning, there's the parking garage that will go in the middle and then two new mixed-use buildings. Here is a rendering of what it may like. We're still tweaking the designs a little bit, but here's a rendering of what it may look like on, at the corner of Fifth and State where the former McDonald's was. This will be a mixed-use building, just over 60,000 square feet. There'd be room for a commercial tenant on the ground floor, residential units on the upper floors. You can see that the architects have worked in, some of the, have worked in a facade to make sure that it goes along with the historic fabric that's down here already. We didn't want something that was ultra-modern or just didn't fit within the aesthetics of what is in our historic downtown. Now, going across, going west on Fifth Street to the corner of Fifth and Peach, this is where the mixed-use building will go. Behind that building, to orient yourselves, behind that building is where the parking garage will be. So there'd be an entrance along Fifth Street. There'd be, excuse me, Fifth Street over here, there'd be an entrance along Peach Street. But this mixed-use building will have ground floor retail. There'd be between three to four spaces, depending on how big each retail space needs, and then residential units on the upper floors.
Excuse me, John, what the, who would be running the parking garage? That could be Parking Authority or are we going to stay with downtown?
We've been talking with Christopher Friday, the Executive Director at the Parking Authority, about the plans. We haven't, we haven't formalized anything. And so that's something that we still have to work on. But we're hoping to break ground, I'll talk about timing in a second here, but we're hoping to break ground on these projects this spring, which means that these projects, they'll take quite a bit to build, they're significant projects. So they likely won't be finished until late 2022, early 2023. We realize we've got some time to hammer out any type of arrangement with the Parking Authority or find some other management entity. But that is, that's still to be determined. Now, going over to the other side of Fifth and State, we had acquired three buildings from historic buildings, from the Art Museum and a building from the DeLuca family, which we are in the process of renovating all these buildings. Our offices are at the White Building, the cashier's house, 417 State Street. But we are actually going to move out around the corner, above Glassgowers. This building is too big for us. There's only four of us. And it's a historic building right on Main Street. We want this building open to the public. We want people to come inside and see what a beautiful historic building it is. So we're working with a local chef to start a cafe on the ground floor and hope to open this to the public, hopefully later this summer. I'll talk about, again, the timing in a second. The brick building is the Benel Building. We're improving the storefronts, fixing up spaces on the ground floor. The upper floors, again, as I mentioned earlier, this is where we had, in the commercial office space, we had received before COVID for downtown office space. It's a bit soft now. Employers are just not sure, I think, don't want to make a, enter into any lease. They kind of know what's happening with the pandemic and when people can go back to office environment. We're looking at this commercial office space and assessing whether it may make a better fit as coworking space or flex space or office space. And we know that the pandemic has showed us that technology, as we are an example of it this morning, technology has enabled us to work remotely from anywhere. And we're trying to figure out if we can pitch for more remote workers. Could we put together a package that involves, say, residential units and then remote working space in this building? So that's something that we're working through and more to come on that. At the corner here, this is the DeLuca Building. And these are getting, this building's getting a new storefront and all the residential units on the upper floors, we're in need of just a complete overhaul, new mechanical, electrical plumbing systems. And so we are working through that right now. Going back to sort of the commercial office space, here's what prospective commercial office space might look like. Want to preserve the brick, the historic nature of the buildings. What's great about these buildings is they have such great big, large windows that allow natural light to shine in. I get teased by my family in the summertime for, they claim on vacation when really I'm sitting at my desk and getting a sunburn from all the sun that streams in. So it's office space. And then here is what could be a potential, potential space. Now, this is on one of the smaller units. This is a studio apartment. You can see kind of a bed that's screened behind a shelf there. We will have a range of units, studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. It'll be a range of prices, depending on the size, depending on the building that it is. They will all have all the amenities that they need, full kitchen, full bath, washer and dryer inside the units. And let me jump into, I'll talk- It'll be separate because, it won't be included in rent because we know that some people who have already expressed an interest in, in living in these units are currently working downtown and have parking at their office. So there are people at 100 States who have parking there, people that are insurance of, there, people, damn it. And so the parking will be separate, parking will be public. So anyone who wants to, it'll have a mix of, wants to enter into a monthly lease and then a mix of daily occupants.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No worries at all. No worries. So that's it. That's, that's the, the total build out. That's those three blocks right there. The economic impact is shown right here. Now, we've sent about $10 million today to acquiring properties. We estimate that we'll spend just around 100 million when you factor in the contingencies between 110 and 120. We're hoping that they will praise at 65% of their value. And I'm, I'm sorry that they are not praising at that value today. So to give you an example, we are spending 24 million on North Park Row to acquire and redevelop Park Place Sherlocks and Dispatch, which is where the food hall, the market, and 28 residential units are going. So 24 million, does anyone want to take a guess at what it came praised at? I, I wish it was half.
Oh, my goodness. I'm going to praise you. I think she's lost.
If it had appraised at half, I would have been happy. It appraised at $7.7 million. So straight out of the gates, we're losing 70% of the value of the property. And, you know, that, that doesn't make any economic sense for anyone. And that's why you don't see a lot of investment into these properties. Unless you've got like our board who believes in the long-term future of Erie. They believe in not just the next 50 days of Erie, but the next 50 years of Erie. And that's why they're spending this money, willing to invest all this time and energy and effort into these properties because they believe that there's great potential and that we can turn this community around together. So that's why they're doing it. And we're hopeful that one day we'll get this, this 65% value. One day we'll also get 100% of what we've spent. Even if we hit 65%, we will, we will be, there will be an increase of property taxes to city council, county council, to school district of almost $2 million. You can see right now we're paying $176,000 in taxes. And then after, based on today's property tax rate, we would be paying between 2.3 and 2.5 million dollars. So a big economic boost for the city, school district and the county. We are projecting somewhere between 25, 35 new businesses coming downtown. Again, it goes to how we may split up the retail spaces. With our partners here, they're projecting between 300 and 450 new jobs downtown, which has all sorts of ancillary benefits to it. And then again, we're at 144 residential units, but we're still tweaking some of these designs. In terms of the timing, obviously you know this better than anyone else. It's an interesting time to be trying to open public spaces where we want people to be congregating and getting together. We are on track, though, to open seven of these buildings later this year. Those would be Park Place Sherlocks and Dispatch, which would be the market, the food hall and the residential units. And then the block three properties, the cashier's house, the Benel Building, Tenny's Fifth, and then the DeLuca Building. As I mentioned, for block two, the former McDonald's block will start construction this spring. And that could take a year and a half to two years to complete. We'll know more as we get into it. And then in the middle of the North Park Row, we have some tenants in there. So that will, we won't start construction until later this year, it'll take until early 2023.
You said DeLuca Building? Are you just telling that, telling us that for reference?
Yes.
Okay, I thought maybe you would name it DeLuca Building for all the years you was there.
We, we are still working through kind of some of the names for the buildings. And, and some have historic references, some have just numbers, and we're kind of working through all that.
Thank you.
John, I had two questions. One is, what was Cincinnati's experience in terms of, you know, that appraised value? Did they have, did they start at the really low end? And then they've obviously been in this for many more years than Erie. And I don't know, are you still looking at Cincinnati as inspiration or kind of a-
Model, plan?
We've looked at a number of different cities and thinking some of those cities, yeah, see that there is a gap. And that's the, why the equity fund was created, was to fill that gap in projects. But the gap wasn't as drastic in other cities as it is here. 70% is made twice what you see in other cities. It's quite drastic. Let me say, twice what you see in other cities that we are looking towards as models. So bigger cities, you know, if you were to take into consideration some smaller cities within our geographic footprint, there may be a similar, similar gap. But some of the bigger cities, that gap is not as pronounced. And so Cincinnati did not have as big of a gap as we're facing.
And I also wanted to ask, I know, obviously, you know, COVID has, has changed so much. But I read a really good story. Between the time I emailed you, I didn't have a chance to follow up because being a caregiver for my husband right now, he just had surgery. But I read a really good story by Richard Florida. You know, he's one of those urban fault, you know what I mean, tracks urban trends. And he talked about the importance of attracting talent to cities again. And that just struck me that, you know, despite all the challenges Erie has, there's also this sense of pride. But might there be opportunity? I mean, just basically what he was saying is, you know, we know what's happening on the coast that, you know, their housing prices went ridiculously high. People have been leaving the cities and some of those people are moving to the suburbs. But it sounded like a hopeful note for focusing, not so much on landing businesses, which is more the Chambers rule, but landing talent. So have you had a chance to think about, I don't want to say positives from COVID because that seems like a stretch or maybe not the right word to use. But might there be opportunity in, you know, attracting people again to downtown? Even if they're working remotely, I don't know. It just, I, I know you keep track of this stuff and I was really glad to hear you talk about, well, not glad, but you know, you're looking at the, at the softer, you know, office space market. But could you tell us a little bit about the, like, some hopeful trends you might see out there? Or will we start to pick up on those opportunities?
I, I think that's a great phrase and that's how we, we look at it, is it's opportunities. When there's disruption in anybody's lives, there's always opportunities that are created. And so we are looking at these, the disruption that's been caused by COVID and how do we create opportunities out of it? And we know that we can ourselves pack, make a nice package for remote workers. We've got residential units and we've got a market coming online and we've got parking and we've got, we're within walking distance to the waterfront and we've got flexible office space. But it is a competition across the entire country for talent across the world. People can move anywhere. And so what you see in other cities is gave $10,000 blank check to people who would relocate there. Bentonville, which is where Walmart is located, gave $10,000, they matched the $10,000 and threw in a mountain bike because they've got a big mountain biking culture in Arkansas. So if we, we can do our part by offering residential units and flexible office space. But if we really want to be serious about attracting talent here, we collectively as a community have to take a look at what all do we have to offer and what can be the most attractive package that we can put together. And so there are certain things that are just outside of our control that we don't, that we cannot offer. And so we can't go out on behalf of other organizations or other entities. But we know what we can do and we're doing it to the best of our ability.
Okay. And what do you see as city councils' opportunity to, to help in that regard? Or is that something that we should continue to talk about or brainstorm about? And not just with EDDC, but with some of the others? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. Let us know what, how we can be part of that competition. I think it's a really, it's a good way of putting it. We can't just, sometimes we live in our bubble, even pre-COVID. So we have to know what, what that competition is out there, I think. So anything that you can pass our way that would open our eyes to what we're, what those challenges are elsewhere, I think would be helpful to us.
Absolutely. And when I say, I'll, I can compile what we've got other cities. When I, when I say talent, it is, it's the talent that is out in the world that we want to get to come here. It's the talent that has left. We've had a lot of talented individuals be, grow up here, be educated here and leave. And it's also the talent we're trying to keep. So we've got a, we've got a lot of talent in our educational system right now that we don't want them to leave. And so we should be thinking about it on all fronts. And by creating a welcoming diverse downtown, that's what we're trying to do. But there's more that we could be doing.
Great job, John. We're getting close on time here now. But that kind of reminds me a little bit of Field of Dreams. If we build it, they will come. And what you're building looks pretty good. 144 units residentially scares me a little bit. But if we get rid of this pandemic, sky's the limit. I'm very impressed with you doing it.
Thank you very much.
And I thank you for your time. I think we probably have to start our reading, huh?
Mr. President.
Liz, you want to give a comment on Coleman Burgek for a moment?
Sure.
Mr. President, can we ask John to give us an update once again in June, midsummer or mid-year?
John, we look forward to seeing you again in June or whatever as things start breaking.
It is my absolute hope that I can give you that update inside Flagship City Food Hall over great offerings from some of our great local chefs and food and beverage entrepreneurs.
Thank you, John. Very, very good presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think moving on, we start our meeting, Lori?
Roll call for the city council meeting of February 3rd, 2021 at 9:00 AM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Lori, just as a aside, we've had comments, besides that, going in that as a show of solidarity, we shouldn't be all wearing our masks. I know some people are at home, but it would be in solidarity with it. And I hate these things. We're wearing them. So it might be a good idea if you girls and guys with one look or whatever we call it. And I know it's difficult and we'll be talking and we'll be dropping. But if everybody's watching this, and they are, it'd be a good idea to have that for the group.
Lori, you're muted.
I think I'm, I'm a little muffled when I have my mask on. That's why I'm not wearing it.
That's why I'm not wearing it.
No, you're okay. You're not the shot. Just a quick order. Citizens would be heard, start talking again.
Okay. Okay, we have a silent meditation.
Yes, we'd like to have a, a moment of silent meditation to remember Erie Police Officer Richard Burdick. It'll be the 30-year anniversary of when he was killed in the line of duty on Friday. So let's remember him for his sacrifice and for all our public safety officers who put their lives on the line.
Thank you, Liz. Was FBI, he's done a lot of work, he's doing pretty good. He's also making a nice time for Dr. C D on. He's fighting through this COVID thing down in Pittsburgh. A great guy, great surgeon, and say first one, please. Are we ready for the pledge?
Well, I think we'll let Michael do his prayer.
Mr. Keys will say a quick prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we'd just like to, first of all, thank you for the day in that you have graced us with, we thank you for this assembly and we thank you for the city. We ask for your help for all those who are facing, that, who are grieving and those who are facing hardship due to illnesses. We just ask that you hold them in your hand and that you keep them. And we also ask that you keep us, keep us in a way that is pleasing to you. And we ask that everything in this meeting be done in decency and order to your pleasure and to your glory. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which it stands, to which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel and Lori, we're having some tech issues with Ed. Ed, your microphone is all, all kinds of weird. I'm going to ask you to unplug your headphones and plug them back in very firmly. And then if that doesn't work, I'm going to have Mike disconnect you from the audio and then reconnect you. Councilman Brennan, I just sent you a text message. I know we've been having some audio issues with you. I'm going to ask you to just try to call in on a different number. And if that doesn't work, I'm going to have you try to sign out and then sign back in. For those listening, if you're having tech issues, you can email me. That's F S T R U M I L A at Erie dot P A dot U S. And please leave your phone number so I can give you a call and try to get you logged on. I have no idea why there are so many issues. President Brzezinski, you're muted, so try to unmute and then we'll, we'll try that again.
How's that? Your phone's worn bad anyway.
Maybe just try to talk a lot louder than you usually do, which I know is a stretch, but.
Francis, where are these things?
Lori, you're also muted. So if you were trying to.
I was just telling Ed, his microphone isn't near him. He, he doesn't have his headphones in.
Oh, does he? Nothing like a virtual world.
They're not in his ears.
That's why you can't hear.
Does this work?
No.
Lori, if, if Mike is there, try have it, if there's another pair of headphones lying around.
He doesn't have them in, does he?
No, you sound like you're in a tunnel.
He's lost everything.
phone. And I'll, I'll mute if there's some echo issues. For the rest of council, please mute and unmute yourselves if you need to speak. Councilman Brennan, are you able to hear us or talk to us? Let's ask you to unmute. Wait a second. Councilman Brennan, did you call in on a 917 number?
I'm just a visitor. I'm an applicant.
Ah, thank you.
It says microphone array.
You're, you're good. Did you just hang up? I think I had you. I just saw your number pop up at the end there. So if you want to call back in, I can bring you into the meeting. I do apologize.
Frank, we're trying to get him on the settings that I have when I had the trouble with the audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving along.
Are we waiting for Mr. Brennan?
David, are you there?
We can move forward if he can hear us.
Okay. Motion to accept the minutes from the January 20th, 2021 meeting. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski, and bills for payment on February 5th and February 12th, 2021. Okay, we have a presentation by Kathy Rustic, planning director.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Great. I have on the line, who's also sharing his screen, Jeff Rigner. He is a consultant with WRNA and they were the consultants hired to assist the city in completing a bike ped transportation plan for the city of Erie called Active Erie. This process started over a year ago, back in October 2019. So actually, it's been quite a while. It was delayed a little because of COVID, like, like norm, you know, with every other project we've worked on. We did have some issues when the pandemic hit, but we, we muscled through those, continued with the planning process. The plan that's being presented to you has gone through as much rigorous public input as we could do during, under pandemic conditions. It has been well-informed by a very large steering committee, composed of representatives from active transportation agencies and organizations. And I think Jeff has a slide that shows everyone who was on our steering committee. In addition to that, we've had an Active Erie dedicated website that also solicited input and feedback from the public and from residents. We sent out online surveys, which was the best that we could do under the conditions that we were held to during the pandemic. We wanted to do a lot more face-to-face outreach, but that just wasn't available to us. So instead of doing the face-to-face, which we normally would have done during the warmer months, during, at festivals, fairs and, and sort of on bike routes, what we did instead is we hosted a day-long mobile workshop last October. And we, thanks to Frank Stromilla's wonderful skills, it was live streamed all day at each. We stopped at six locations, 15, I think it was 15 miles on bikes. We stopped at six locations, held many workshops at each of those locations. We had some good representations, a lot of, a couple of people came out. It wasn't, the weather wasn't kind to us, but we, again, we muscled through. And we really wanted to showcase what the plan, what was coming together, what the ideas were. And, and we did that mobile workshop along some of the major corridors that are identified in this plan. The plan then went to planning commission, as it should, for their review. It received unanimous support and is recommended now to city council for your adoption. There is a resolution on your agenda today that if you so approve the resolution, would essentially adopt this as the city's bike ped plan. I would like to note, and we don't have to go into sort of the, the planning, planning jargon that I tend to, tend to go into, but I, when you're, I was on the, I was on, on your meeting last night and then, and then listened to the caucus discussion today. And I think it's important to note that when the city, including city council, the mayor's administration and, and all of those people are, are identifying priorities that you want to put your resources to that'll make this city the attraction that you want it to make or for it to become, what you, the ideas that you have for it, those ideas and those, the recommendations out of plans like these should be your priorities. And that's, that's really why it's being brought before you today, is that these recommendations, once you adopt this plan, you're adopting it, you're taking a claim in it and saying, this is what we will want, we want to work on over the next five to 10 years to realize. This is just not an exercise. If you ever wonder why a plan sits on a shelf for 20 years and nothing ever happens, it's because that connection is not made by the people who've, who've completed the planning work. That is not my intention when I, when I bring any planning or recommendation to you. It is meant to be a working document that sets the, sets the pace and the stage for what the city should be doing over the next five to 10 years. And if it's not what you, if it's not what you agree with, if it's not something that you believe is important enough to put resources and time into, then you shouldn't adopt it. So this is really a very important step for council to be taking, as much as important step as the previous plans that were brought before you for the neighborhood strategic plans. That is another reason why those are brought to council for your adoption. They have recommendations for funding, recommendations for direct resources from the city and from outside agencies. And those recommendations should be then turned into a capital improvement plan that the city, city then works on and funds. Grant, a grant writing program that the city designates over the next five years, what grants will be applied for, to implement the recommendations out of these plans. And I just want, I thought it was a good time to remind everyone that that's really what plans are supposed to be about, is setting the priorities that the community comes together and works on. So this is a very vital role and I think it's, it's good timing as you go into, as city council goes into setting priorities on what they want to work on, what they want to focus. Those priorities should be embodied in these plans as you adopt them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. He's got about a 10-minute presentation and take you through the plan and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, members of council, both for the opportunity to present today and for the opportunity to work on this project. It's been a real privilege getting to know the community and its people. I think Erie has lots of very positive things ahead with respect to walking and biking. All of you received a link to the final draft plan at activeery.com. This, as Kathy mentioned, sets a blueprint for creating better walking and bicycling conditions in the city. She set up really well the two parts of the plan that I'd like to review with you briefly today. The recommendations, so the actual things that could change, and specific implementation steps, so that the plan does not sit on the shelf, but rather actually turns into real change for the citizens of Erie. So the recommendations take the form of improvements to bicycling, improvements to walking, and general policy recommendations. The bikeway network is designed to be both aspirational, reaching every corner of the city, but realistic, understanding that massive construction projects on many streets in the city are not going to be fiscally reasonable. So we've created a network that is designed for use by any adult cyclist, regardless of their skill level, as well as some older children, say, middle school or high school age children, without supervision. And there are three different types of improvements that you'll see in the map on the following page that's in the plan. The majority of the network is bikeways along existing low-stress streets. Low stress means ones that we can bike on today without too much issue, except potentially for crossing larger streets. And we followed largely that network on the mobile workshop in October that Kathy was talking about. So we know exactly what it's like and we understand what issues there are at those crossing points of major streets, but also how pleasurable it is riding on streets with low traffic, traveling at low speeds. There are a few sections of the network that require more significant construction, so it's not just signs and markings, but also moving curbs or potentially other larger capital projects. And then there's a smaller segment, but very important segment, which are local connections. Many schools, shopping centers, what have you, are a couple of blocks off of the major network. So those local connections allow people to reach the places that they want to go. And this shows the overall network. There are sections in the plan about every one of the routes that you see here. The east-west routes that are designated are Sixth Street and East Lake Road, 10th Street, a combination of local streets that are 21st, 19th, and Fairmount Parkway, another combination of local streets, 32nd, 29th, and 28th Streets. And then finally, improvements along 38th Street, which I'm sure you can imagine would be a larger capital project. And then there are a series of seven north-south routes, Pittsburgh Avenue and the Mill Creek Line to the west, Green Garden, Cascade, French Street, East Avenue, including a portion of the Bayfront Bikeway, Dowling Avenue and Bird Drive. And as you can see, that overall network, when completed, covers pretty much the entire city. I think every resident will be within about a quarter mile of one of, one or more of these routes. There are also some improvements anticipated to State Street. You are undoubtedly familiar with the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan, which recommends the types of improvements that you see in the graphic on this, this slide. This would not be a low-stress route for everyone, but it provides key connections to many destinations in downtown Erie, including the redevelopment that, that John talked about in the caucus meeting today. So we recommend that as well. In terms of sidewalks, there is a fairly detailed map of the city that shows an inventory of existing sidewalks and where gaps exist. A bigger issue than missing sections of sidewalk, or at least as big an issue, is sidewalk maintenance. So we recommend a comprehensive sidewalk completion and repair program as, as an outcome of this plan. So evaluating sidewalk repair requirements, looking at the ADA transition plan and creating an annual capital program to fill in sidewalk gaps as well as potentially. an annual capital program to fill in sidewalk gaps, as well as potentially move forward other recommendations of this plan. Then finally, a section called policies, procedures, and programs. This is not the fancy ribbon-cutting kind of stuff that bikeways or sidewalk projects could be, but this is how, as you are very well aware, government gets its work done. So we recommend a number of updates to policies, procedures, and programs. I want to hit on just a couple as part of the presentation. One of them is finalizing, adopting, and implementing a complete streets policy. In a single-sentence description, that means every action that the city takes that affects a street considers all of its users, which means people of all ages and abilities, people walking, bicycling, driving, taking transit. We recommend a five-year capital improvement program for the city. Most cities, Erie's size, or sometimes even smaller, use the CIP as their primary way of setting priorities and turning the recommendations of plans into reality. And we think that many, many initiatives across Erie, not just walking and biking, would benefit from the adoption of a CIP process. There are a number of other recommendations as well for policies, procedures, and programs. I won't go through them in detail now. They're all enumerated in the plan. Kathy talked about the importance of turning recommendations into reality, and that's what the implementation section is for. We have a specific staged implementation plan in the document, with actions starting pretty much as soon as you choose to adopt the plan. A lot of those early items are the policies, procedures, programs that I mentioned, but we do recommend that some easier project, the ones that are in green on the map, should start, at least in planning and design, if not construction, this year. That should begin with an easier project along one of those existing low-stress streets. But we do suggest, actually, I would strongly recommend, that you work very closely with local communities to make sure they are interested in being the first ones to receive this, and that they are directly and actively engaged in the planning and design process for those facilities. They best serve the communities when they're developed jointly with those communities. And this plan is structured to allow for completion of the network, depending on funding, of course, as everything is, within about a 10- to 12-year timeframe, with a lot of the green, easier projects being able to be implemented much sooner than that. So that's a brief overview of the plan. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to look at some of the other specific elements of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Jeff, I had one question, which is kind of, it might sound too specific, and maybe this relates to zoning, but I remember I got an email sometime, probably more than a year ago, from somebody who was, I don't know, rehabbing a house somewhere on the, in the West Bayfront. And there is a brick sidewalk there, and this property owner felt that it was important to preserve the brick sidewalk as part of the historic, you know, function or history of the neighborhood. I know bricks can stick up too, but would that be, I think the person had been maybe cited by zoning for the brick sidewalk, but is that anything you could, that you came across in your studies? And I wasn't able to give the person a good answer. I just thought I would throw it out there, because I do a lot of walking and biking, and, you know, I do appreciate the brick sidewalks. I think, you know, at my age, I might trip on them too, but do you have any thoughts on that?
Council of analysis, not something that came across specifically in the plan, although there was a great deal of input from the public about sidewalk conditions in general. And we did incorporate that into this, the pedestrian recommendations of the plan. Specifically for bricks, they are, they are wonderful contributors to the storied character of many neighborhoods. They can be a challenge, especially for those who have mobility difficulties. You know, the best practice, if a property owner can afford it, is to actually set them on a bed of concrete, so that they're less likely to shift over time.
Okay.
Not an inexpensive solution, but it helps keep the surface of the bricks more flush over time, and less likely to pop up and cause a tripping hazard.
Thank you. And I had one other question about the, let me see, the complete, let me go back there, the complete streets concept. And this kind of relates to sitting up here, looking out at the snow on my street, and we, we, well, maybe Kathy might be able to answer this too. I know that in one of the neighborhood plans, I think in our West Bayfront, and I think Kathy has actually talked about this, that this would be addressed, but I think in the West Bayfront plan, there was a recommendation to change some of the one-way streets to two-way, at least on Eighth Street, to help with, like, even, I don't know, access to, you know, retail there. But one of my particular concerns is that, and I hate to bring it home to me, but I live on a street which is very narrow. We have a lot of shared driveways, a lot of on-street parking, and you can only park on one side of the street, so it's not odd-even parking. So, you know, when the plow comes through, that, the west side of the street rarely gets plowed. And I noticed there was a comment on the city's Instagram post the other day. Well, actually, there was, there were recommendations, or, you know, hey, you got to observe the odd-even parking rules in the city. But the odd-even parking rules for on-street parking are in the central city. They don't extend out there. And I guess my, not being a transportation expert, I would hope that at some point, I don't know if this is part of the complete streets review, but that we would actually look at odd-even parking, how it impacts people who must use on-street parking and get a lot of parking tickets. So that's maybe more an editorial comment than a question. But I'm just thinking that those odd-even parking rules, I mean, I looked in the ordinance, they were implemented years ago, before we had all these, like, huge SUVs parking on the street and everything. So more editorial comment, and not specifically asking for relief on my street, because I only have one car now, so I do use the shared driveway. But just, I think we need to be aware that when people are getting parking tickets when they live in the central city, they don't have off-street parking, they're using on-street parking, and they're moving their cars and everything. So I'm just hoping that the complete streets might actually take a look at how those original ordinances were devised, and they might need to be updated, and also the one-way street recommendations. So that's my soapbox.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Does that conclude the presentation? If it is, Kathy?
I'm sorry, Ed, I do have one more, because Kathy and I had talked about this by email. We also had a question from somebody, and this is not about the PennDOT plan for corridor improvements on Eighth Street. And Kathy Rosick, I was hoping maybe you could just reiterate what you told me, and Jeff, what you said about those, you know, we have a plan for the low-stress bike routes. I think somebody was wondering why the PennDOT plan didn't include bike routes, if I'm conveying that correctly. So Kathy, maybe if you, just for the, for council's benefit and for the public, could kind of reiterate what you've already said in this presentation, just so we can answer the...
Sure. I'm going to, actually, I think there's two, there's two things that need to be covered is, one, what the plan's recommendations for those corridors that Jeff just went over, that is really something, that's a proactive approach to actually developing a bike network throughout the city. We believe, because of the way that those roads are designed currently, that there's low traffic stress, that they have almost complete connection between east-west or north-south. So those are the areas that the city should focus on to add bike lanes where appropriate, signage, wayfinding. Then we have the aspirational, four or five aspirational projects, and Jeff's going back to those. Those, so the green ones, the green lines are the low-stress networks that would take very little funding to build out for bike and bike infrastructure. The magenta or the heavy pink lines are the corridors that need, because of the way that they're currently constructed, but they are important connectors, they need additional funding. It's going to, it's going to be a little bit more expensive to actually add bike facilities, but they are necessary. This is the plan that the city needs to look at to fund and develop. Moving forward, however, other roads are not off the table for consideration of bike facilities, and you do that through the complete streets policy. So you have sort of a decision lens through that complete streets policy that the city would use to decide, is this yet another appropriate place for a bike lane, or something akin to, you know, anyone who's sort of getting around that corridor. I would say, because I wasn't really at the table for the West Eighth Project, but I know that LeAnn, who's on the call, and I don't think Jason is, who's with our engineering department, but that is certainly something that they looked at as a potential, but because of the complexity of that road, it's not a low-stress road, there's a lot of driveways, you have inaccessible route on West Sixth Street. Actually, Sixth Street is a, you know, is a PA bike route already designated. And the fact that Mill Creek, I don't believe, is planning bike lanes on their side of West Eighth. They actually sat on the steering committee for this plan and approved of the connections that we were making on West Sixth, on Pittsburgh, and some of the others. Those were embraced by Mill Creek as corridors and as designs that they would support and potentially extend throughout their township. So for a number of reasons, I think that's why a bike lane was not proposed for West Eighth. It doesn't, like, but like I said, the complete streets policy framework is how you would vet other areas in the city. So it's not a one-and-done, but I just want to make the distinction between what the plan recommends in a policy, what the plan recommends in actual projects.
Thank you, Kathy. Does that make sense, Liz? Yes, it does, and I appreciate you explaining that, so that anybody who's watching the meeting will also take that in. And my final suggestion would be, I think I had to work the day you did the bike ride, but, and I do, I do see a lot of people actually riding bikes, fat tire bikes out there, and I'm not one of them, but maybe, you know, when the snow is gone, it might be fun or productive to do that bike ride again, just to let people know. I think the more publicity we have about what is already existing and what the needs are, I think it would help to, you know, keep, to continue to gather support for the active transportation plan. So as you said, it doesn't just stay on the shelf. So if you do another bike ride, and I'm available, I'll be there. Thank you for everything.
We'll also keep on your radar too, Liz, as you may recall, our partnership with Erie Arts and Cultures, they're creating with community. Their next round of artists are going to be focused on helping us develop the bike network along 19th Street. So there will be, over the next six, six months or so, opportunities for council and others. Thanks, Jeff. He's doing such a great job pointing out these things as we go. But, so there's going to be lots of opportunities to work with artists to help design what that corridor looks like, that could translate into other areas of the city. So there's going to be at least an opportunity to do that, Liz, and I'll certainly keep you up to speed on how that progresses.
Thank you.
Kathy, I have a question. This is Dave Brennan. Can you hear me?
I can.
Hello? Oh, great, great.
Yes, can you hear me?
Again, I'm so glad to be, so glad to be connected here. I just got connected here. Oh, I was just going to ask a question that you may not have the answer, but I just, I was thinking about it. For prioritizing, I know it's all with funding and so forth. I know several neighborhoods have been seeking these type of transportation areas for a while. Will those kind of go first, or, I guess, how are we going to go about, when we do get the funding, to prioritize where these go first, or where the, what routes go first?
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. That's something that I know Jeff, Lea, LeAnn, and I, and Emily Aloy, who's on the, sort of the core team, have been discussing, is that once this goes, once you've adopted this plan, it's going to take a city team of people, we call it the city action team, to come together and start prioritizing those, and bringing those before you, either in the form of recommendations in the budget, or potentially grants. So that's essentially what will happen next. Now, I think the work that we're doing with our neighborhood plans, the ones that we've already done, the ones that have already been completed by groups like our West Bayfront, can help inform, and already has helped to inform this plan. I mean, we certainly didn't, we didn't ignore what was already recommended in something like our West Bayfront or in the East Bayfront neighborhood. So those, I think, automatically, since they've been publicly vetted and are part of the plan, have already risen to the top. But it's going to take a team of people who are working to implement this over the next five, 10 to 12 years, as Jeff pointed out.
Yeah, and as you know, Sister of St. Joseph on the east and west side of 19th Street, of course, they've, they've been looking at this, and I think they have support there also, which I'm sure you already know.
Yeah, and that's another reason why we went, we used, or we partnered with Erie Arts and Culture. That was why we selected that corridor, was the 19th Street corridor.
Great.
Our mobile workshop also stopped at Three Sisters Park as well. So the two things that I would really strongly suggest be part of prioritization, Councilman Brennan, and these are in the report, are community support and a focus on traditionally underserved and under-resourced communities. There are many opportunities to do that, of course, in Erie. I think one of the reasons that we chose 19th Street as part of the mobile workshop is specifically that, is it's an opportunity to lift up communities that have traditionally not gotten as many resources. And it's great to have community groups as representation for those populations to make sure that their views are incorporated into the process.
Regarding 19th Street, how far, 19th between what and what?
It's 19th between Cherry to Parade, goes right past Spoons Basketball Court. That was another reason we wanted to make sure, so it'll go right past between the Public Works Building, Public Works Garage and Spoons. I'm sorry, is that what you call it, Mel? Spoon Basketball Court.
That's what it is, yes, ma'am.
So we thought, you're on our list of people to work with our artists, because I think that's a great spot to maybe infuse some artistic expression that shows the importance of being active in the city.
That's interesting, because I have spoken to Mr. Moverhill a couple of months ago, and with an idea of making the court itself a mural of the city of Erie.
Well, we have some artists that were, that I believe were selected that are, that are mural artists, so we'll be sure to get them.
Thank you very much.
Jeff and Kathy, and you will have accommodations for the ADA accessible needs and visually impaired pedestrians along these ways?
There are a number of policies there. Jeff was going to go back to that. I'll let you talk about that, Jeff.
Sure. The city has, I'm sorry, city has an ADA transition plan, which is specifically aligned to making sure that intersections are accessible. So, and any new construction that's undertaken by the city, whether that's a new project or a retrofit of an existing area, those facilities must be compliant with ADA.
Thank you, and look forward to watching this thing become complete. Moving right along. Okay.
Mr. President, we have two repositories that are up for city council's consideration. They answered the questions. This is for property at 53133 West 17th Street by Mr. Knocik. He is answering the questions, is your property vacant, or does it have a structure? The... The property is vacant. His intention is to maintain the property in compliance with city code, thereby removing the property maintenance costs from a responsibility of city taxpayers. Longer term, I am researching purchasing an adjacent property or the construction of a new building. The vacant land is relatively clean and maintained. I live in the city of Erie near Frontier Park. The vacant land can be maintained by our landscaper, who maintains our other properties in compliance with city code and reasonable aesthetic appearance. Okay. There are three under consideration from Mr. Patrick Hart. The first one is 419 Wilson. The property is vacant. My plans are to use it in the future as part of a wider use with my other vacant lots in a commercial greenhouse operation to be known as Hart Farms. The property is in good shape. I live on Carney Avenue in the city with my wife, Jennifer. It's an, it's approximately a 10-minute drive north on the Bayfront Connector to Wilson Street. How will I provide maintenance? I will keep the property in respectable-looking shape. He has another property that he wants to purchase on East Fifth Street. It's a vacant lot in the 800 block. Is the property vacant or does it have a structure on it? The property is covered with trees and weeds and has no structure. I could be, it could be used in various ways. It could be used as a fruit orchard or with zoning approval warehouses can be placed on the property for commercial storage or rental. The property's condition is overgrown with deep-rooted trees that would have to be removed before making full use of the property. I live on Carney Avenue, approximately a 10-minute drive north on the Bayfront Highway. I will provide maintenance on the property by walking the property frequently and in the near future, one to two years with a fence. Another property he's proposing to purchase is 858 East Fifth Street. Is the property vacant? There is no structure on the property. My plans are to at first add it back to the tax base, but with proper zoning at a warehouse for commercial storage. The property is in a corner lot that's somewhat weedy with one large tree on it. I live on Carney Avenue, approximately a 10-minute drive north on the Bayfront Connector. I will keep the property looking presentable, removing garbage, cutting grass, et cetera. That completes the repository. I think that takes us to public comment.
We'll just stop from the, start from the top and, and make our way down. So Freda Tepfer.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
So this is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West Twenty-third Street in Erie. I am a retired orientation and mobility specialist. And I established next-door Baldwin Park neighborhood. We are up to currently 170 neighbors, members. And I wanted to point that out because our neighborhood is part of this vast Green Garden neighborhood in the Erie Refocus Plan, which is not representative of our neighborhood. When, we, we do want to be part of neighborhood planning, but we want to be part of something that more represents who we are. So there should be some more logical thing. I am concerned with the city's obsession with code enforcement of residential violations. I read about the $200,000 that's going to go to support code enforcement, the upgrade of the electronic infrastructure, et cetera, for residential violations. However, I don't know how many times I have repeatedly called in commercial, industrial, religious, and even city-owned properties where sidewalks are not maintained free of obstacles, both in the winter and the rest of the year and, and while, and during construction. And while LeAnn Parminter and her staff are very cooperative, there's only one person doing the inspection. Why don't we pay as much attention to the needs of the, the city, the pedestrians and others to be able to freely travel our city streets by, by having adequate fees and permits and inspections, rather than just focus on penalizing residents and, and going after residential violations? So I, I have studied the active Erie plan. I was involved with the active Erie plan. When I looked at it last night and what I hear today, I'm, I'm impressed that some of what I've been advocating for is actually included. There, there's quite a bit of attention paid in the plan document to funding and timeline for bicycles and for the West Bayfront neighborhoods. But we need to ensure there's a good funding and timeline for sidewalks. I want to stress the importance of getting sidewalks on Pittsburgh Avenue. This is somewhere that people need to be able to go to get to buses, to get to transportation, to get to shopping. And if there is to be improvement along Green Garden for bicycles, there also needs to be, to ensure that there's adequate sidewalk access along Green Garden. Currently, there really isn't, and especially in the wintertime, where there's always snow on the sidewalks and it's never cleared. The document talked about a bikeway, a dedicated bike lane on French Street, not State Street, because State Street was so busy, but today I hear it's on State Street. I'm not sure what actually is proposed, but whatever, it's important. Dedicated bike lanes in the street do pose a problem to people who are blind and visually impaired, who use traffic, the audible sound of traffic, to help them know when it's safe to cross. So separating them from that traffic lane makes it more difficult. And yes, we do want to be compliant with the ADA. However, the ADA does not address the right-of-way, only the built environment, which is why I have been advocating over and over for the city to adopt the PROAG. The PROAG has been acknowledged by the federal highways as best management practices, but the city engineer refuses to do so. But how can we have a plan that will ensure pedestrian safety if, and we only address the ADA, if the ADA does not address the right-of-way in existing retrofits? Yeah, the plan really needs to emphasize dealing with the maintenance issues. The winter access, the existing problems with winter access due to the narrow sidewalks, many, many places in the city like 12th Street, 38th Street, the snow plows totally cover the sidewalk and the landowners do not bother to clear them. 12th is almost never accessible in the wintertime, often large portions of 38th Street, 26th Street are not accessible. Also, as much as I appreciate our city plow drivers, they do let the snow pile up adjacent to the street crossings. Oops, out of time. Thank you.
We'll go with the phone number of 917-892-0060. The phone number of 917-892. I'll give you 30 seconds.
Hi, I don't, I don't have comments for this matter. Thanks so much.
We'll go to Jim Greenfield.
I also would reserve comment until the P E R E applications come up, which I understand you may add to the agenda today. And if it's appropriate for me to speak at that time, I would prefer to defer until then.
Okay, if that's okay with the council president, council president? Then we're moving on to Lori Edwards.
Do you think he's gonna be able to speak later when they bring up?
I know, but he left us before.
Do you need me to bring Mr. Greenfield back in?
Yeah, we should let him know what's going on, actually, okay?
Okay, Ms. Edwards, please stand by.
Okay, I'm back.
Yes, sir, we just let you know, if you have comments, you should probably make them now, because there won't be comments or discussion on the second reading.
Okay.
Okay.
Very, I'll try to be very brief then, and I appreciate council's indulgence this morning. As you know, I represent Jan Ferguson, who is a contiguous property owner, to the proposal by P E R E to develop 824 to 828 West Second. And I appeared before you during the conditional use hearing. And I, I just wanted to reiterate, as you prepare to consider that application, that this property can be developed both in accordance with code and with due deference to the, to the historical outlay of the community. The developer has the ability to build his structure for his multifamily dwellings close to Second Street, which has been the pattern in that neighborhood. And if he were to do that, it would preserve views for other property owners there. And as I think I mentioned last time, we are about to file an appeal of the zoning board's grant of variance for that application. But with regard to conditional use and to the application in general, the views are important and your zoning code makes that very, very clear. And we think that this property can clearly be developed in a manner that is both compliant with code and preserves the views of neighboring properties. So we would urge that you reject both the conditional use application and land development approval for this and suggest very strongly to the developer that he attempt to come back with a property that's more compliant and more respectful of, of neighborhood conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Edwards?
Council president, Ms. Edwards, one more delay. I believe 917-892 is also Philip Gesu or Jesu. Not entirely sure how to pronounce his last name, I do apologize. But I'm gonna bring him in real quick to make sure that it's passed over him the first time. So if he has comment now.
Phil, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on the phone. I don't, I, I don't really have any comment other than to say that our group and our architect has met with the neighborhood, including Mr. Greenfield's client on at least half a dozen occasions. We've made a number of different accommodations, none of which have been satisfactory. We don't believe that the project can be redesigned to, you know, to what's permitted in the zoning and to have the configuration that Mr. Greenfield suggests. We've worked on it, looked at it, planning has looked at it, planning director, planning staff. So this is an extremely well-vetted project that's had a lot of community outreach. It's had outreach to people who protested. And, you know, we believe that we have gone well beyond the call of reasonableness to do something that, you know, generally has density that's provided for by the code. We're doing a building that is two stories shorter than it can be under the code. We're doing a building that has less bulk than required under the code. So we're doing a project with fewer units than permitted under the code. And we're doing a project with more parking than is required under the code. So I think that there are many, many accommodations that were made to downsize the project. And a newer, bigger, more dense project with less parking, two stories higher, pulled up to Second Street, would not be in the best interest of the community. And that's my response to Mr. Greenfield.
Thank you.
Philip, can you give your address, I suppose, for the record?
Yeah, my address is 1 Worth Street, New York, New York.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Edwards, Lori Edwards, if you'd like to provide your public comment. Thank you. I thank you for your, your patience.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm commenting on Mr. Jesuway's project. I am a resident at 111 Plum Street, which my property is directly affected by this. I agree with Mr. Greenfield on everything that he said. And also, listening to your meeting as before, you're all discussing about parking and how those things need to be changed. And you were stressing about how all these projects were considered with the needs of the people. And mainly, the needs of the people in this neighborhood are not being met by this project. It's almost like an invasion. And if the, if the project doesn't fit the property, maybe the property isn't right for that project. And the people that agree with this don't live here. It's the people that, that do live here do not want this project the way it sets. We all would like it to be not obstructing our view, which we've had forever, which we've paid our property taxes, maintained our property, and made this neighborhood so desirable. And I would appreciate council to consider the neighbors in this area and how it's going to affect them. And maybe Mr. Jesuway would like to take his project elsewhere. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, going to Robert Sprickman.
Good morning.
Morning, Rob.
Robert Sprickman, 111 Plum Street. Lori Edwards is my landlady. And I'm on the second floor and would look out into the wall of this building if it was built. I had a great plan for my conversation with you this morning. But, so I wrote down some talking points rather than writing it out. I tossed and turned for hours. I find it highly irregular that you added it as a vote to your agenda 12 hours before the meeting, or 14 hours before the meeting. Tells me that maybe there's something unusual going on. Is there pressure from the county executive, as it's her property? And she's going out of office and she wants to collect. I believe that, I was a social studies teacher. And I believe that city council has duties. And they are to question and to learn and to advise and to protect citizens' rights. Placing this apartment building in this area, if you could get it in there, is not appropriate. It's the size of the building, the scope, and the impact that it's gonna have on the people that live here. And not to mention the view. But if you've been around the, the last couple days with all the snow and everything, particularly over the weekend, down by that other property, the Laura Wallenstein Apartments, you would have seen parking on both sides in a narrow passageway through. This just doesn't make any sense to inflict something like this on a traditional neighborhood. So I urge you to protect your citizens' rights and to question all the pie in the sky that's coming from New York. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sprickman. Pete, you there?
I'm here, Ed. Thank you. Thank you, council. I, my name is Pete Frazina. I live at 334 Lincoln Avenue. I am a Realtor, Realtor with Agresti Real Estate. I am the agent that represents the seller. And with Mr. Sprickman's remark about the county executive, I think it comes down to what this is all. And with Mr. Sprickman's remark about the county executive, I think it comes down to what this is all about. Not, I, when they say blocking a view, their house runs north and south. It's on the west side of the property. The view for the bay for their house is blocked by Jan Ferguson's two-story house in front of them. So they have no view to the bay whatsoever in that house. So when they look out that side windows, they're seeing the blue house on the east side of the property. They have no, no view of the bay whatsoever because Jan Ferguson's two-story, big two-story house is directly in front of their house. And unless they can look through her window all the way through her house to see the bay, to me, that's the only way they can see the house. And so I have pictures that I took of a sunny day in that neighborhood where shadows from both their house and Jan Ferguson's house were on that property. And I passed it on to counsel to look at it. So their claim of this is a blocking of view, I don't know what view it is blocking. Because Jan Ferguson has a clear view of the bay from her front of her house. The people behind her should be protesting her house because her house is the one that blocked the view for them to have to the bay. So I don't know what their argument is that it's blocking the view. I'm, I wanna know what view it's blocking. Do they wanna look at the blue house to the east? Is that the view that they want? Because they sure as hell don't have a view to the bay directly from their house. Because Jan Ferguson's house is directly in front of their house. Big two-story house that blocks their view. So where, what view will this project be blocking to the east of their house? I, I, I'm fabregasted. So I don't really think that this comes down to them objecting to the project in that as so much as Mr. Sprickman brought it up, who owns the property? And I think that's where the problem lies. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Frisina. Frank?
I believe that's everybody.
Okay. Double check, or we can move right along. Hey, moving right along, Lori. Ordinance is?
Okay, ordinance is for final passage. Council File Number sixteen one ninety-nine, Official File Ordinance Four twenty twenty-one. Appropriating the sum of three hundred
Lori, you're muted, so you'll have to read your.
Thanks. I'm also echoing. Council File Number sixteen one ninety-nine, Official File Ordinance Four twenty twenty-one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction of downtown Erie PA Stormwater Green Infrastructure Pro- Project, U.S. EPA Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant Number zero zero E zero two eight one two. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw. The Council File Bill Number sixteen one ninety-nine, and now known as Official File Ordinance Four twenty twenty-one, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City Council officially passes four zero, four twenty twenty-one by ye seven na zero. Council File Number sixteen two hundred, Official File Ordinance Five twenty twenty-one. An ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction of downtown Streetscape Improvements, Agro Mission Main Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw. The Council File Ordinance Bill Number sixteen two hundred, and now known as Official File Ordinance Five twenty twenty-one, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City Council passes Official File Ordinance Number Five twenty twenty-one by ye seven na zero. Council File Number sixteen two oh one, Official Ordinance Number Six twenty twenty-one. Appropriating the sum of seventy-three thousand dollars from an unappropriated anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction of Perry Square Electrical Improvements, Perry Square Alliance. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw. The Council File Number Bill Sixteen Two Oh One, and now known as Official File Ordinance Six Twenty Twenty One, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City Council passes Official File Ordinance Number Six Twenty Twenty One by ye seven na zero. Okay. Did I miss number seven? Okay, sixteen two oh two, Pending Official File Ordinance Number Seven Twenty Twenty One. Appropriating the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to be received from the National League of Cities Institute. This grant is made available through the City Innovation Ecosystems Program with the purpose of providing support and the implementation of the Kiva Commitment, which is a local platform for micro lending to serve potential entrepreneurs without access to traditional finance. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Number Sixteen Two Oh Two, and now known as Official File Ordinance Seven Twenty Twenty One, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. Council passes Official File Number Seven Twenty Twenty One by ye seven na zero. Now we're going to first reading. Council File Number sixteen two oh three, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of Fifteen Thousand From Unappropriated and Anticip- Unanticipated Revenue For the Expenditure Thereof. This contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police fire and winter maintenance equipment. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Ordinance Number Sixteen Two Oh Three, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number Sixteen Two Oh Three by ye seven na zero. Council File Number sixteen two oh four, An Ordinance Approving the Editing and Inclusion of Certain Ordinances as Parts of the Various Component Codes of the Codified Ordinances of Erie, Pennsylvania. Sponsored by Mr. Brzinski, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Number Sixteen Two Oh Four, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number Sixteen Two Oh Four by ye seven na zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen two oh five, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of Two Hundred Thousand From Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue For the Expenditure Thereof. This contribution is from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Strategic Management Planning Program. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen. The Council File Number Sixteen Two Oh Five, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number Sixteen Two Oh Five by ye seven na zero on first reading. This takes us to new business.
Lori, when do we do the waives the rules uh, for the West Second Street? I had a, someone texted me and I wasn't sure when. When does that come up in the agenda?
I normally do it at the end of the new business.
Okay, thanks.
If that's okay. Any separations?
No separations.
Okay. Motion to move the balance of the agenda, voting on resolution. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. Okay. This takes us to the wave rules. We have two. Okay, motion to waive the rules. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzinski. This is um, a zoning request for nine forty-six West Second.
I um, do not want to waive the rules on this one because I would like to ask the fire department how often they go to the Wallerstein Apartments. Because um, that area with parking on either side may cause uh, an issue with fire safety. Thank you.
Kathy, I agree with you. I uh, I'm, I was for the project all along, but the way it has been presented to us, uh, I was under the impression that the whole project was dead. And then at five o'clock, actually at eleven oh five yesterday, uh, calls came into administration. We didn't find out about it until seven o'clock at night. Uh, there was no shenanigans that we know of as far as the council, but it sure as heck looks like it.
All right, are we talking about waiving the rules then, or are we gonna talk about the project afterwards? Because?
I think we're still talking about waiving the rules, Liz, aren't we?
There's two motions. This was on the first motion.
And Lori, we need five votes to waive the rules?
Yes.
So then, if we don't waive the rules, what happens? We don't vote on?
This could come on, come up on the next agenda.
All right, then, since, I would like to speak then about not, about the need to waive the rules and move these projects forward, if that's okay. Because I'm afraid that if we don't waive the rules, there won't be a chance to speak on this. Um, I heard a resident of Erie tell a developer, quote, that he should take his project elsewhere. I heard someone describe a plan to invest in the city of Erie as inflicting, inflicting something in a neighborhood, inflicting. What kind of language is that to use for development? I heard someone describe it as a pie in the sky project. Yes, Erie has had pie in the sky projects before that haven't come to fruition. This is not one of them. Earlier at our, at our caucus, we heard from John Persinger from the Erie Downtown Development Corporation. He gave us some shocking, shocking statistics about the gap between um, investment in Erie and what something would be appraised at. I asked how Erie compared to some of the cities that uh, EDDC is modeling its downtown development on. He said Erie's gap is much bigger. In other words, if you put money into the city of Erie, there is a huge difference between what you are investing and what you could expect to get back. We have a developer who has been criticized as being from Jersey City. He, he lives in, in Manhattan, actually, but he has Erie roots. We talk on the one hand about uh, the need to take risk and to um, uh, develop our neighborhoods, to invest in our neighborhoods. And yet, we're scorning somebody who is willing to do that. As far as the fire trucks, this developer has explained that there, the parking spaces meet the requirements of the code and that we just adopted an active transportation plan for bike paths. This developer is aware that uh, people who will, who would live here will be biking places, biking to work, maybe even working remotely. John Persinger talked about people trying to attract people to the, to the um, downtown who would like the downtown amenities but might be working remotely. We need to look forward rather than looking backwards. Um, uh, but I really think that we need to think about that uh, return on investment. Because we, I have heard that um, uh, presentation for many years. I heard it when, for instance, the Mercantile Building was, was being developed. It's a struggle for Erie. It's not just about bringing jobs to Erie or retaining the jobs that we have. It's about how do you get people to invest in our present and in our future? And uh, I, I think back to a city council many years ago that got involved in um, Hammer Mill, uh, when the, the, there was a strike going on. And it was a, a bad mark at that time for how um, the city council would treat um, a local business, whether you're pro or con, for whatever the union issue was there. But if the takeaway today is to tell a developer, take his project elsewhere, that's a really bad message that we would be sending. So I, I'm voting in favor of waive the rules on both projects.
Mr. President?
That point of view, Liz. I'm sorry, Lori, you talking, or can I speak? No, I just uh, I don't have any problem. I don't think two weeks is gonna make a difference. We need to make a statement that if we're going to do something, everybody follows the rules. The agenda was set last Thursday. Uh, somebody dropped a whole bunch of liquid someplace because we didn't, the last word that Lori and I received was that the thing was falling apart, the developer was gone. He calls Kathy W. at eleven o'clock in the morning yesterday. We don't hear anything, or I don't hear anything. My vice president doesn't hear anything. Uh, nobody hears anything until seven o'clock at night and they throw it in our face. Uh, I'm not saying I'm against the project. I'm against pushing it through right now just because of a eleven o'clock call or an eight thirty email back to Phil from Kathy saying it's on the agenda. It doesn't work for me. That's all I'm saying.
Can we clarify though? I think, I think we need to clarify that, that this was a process issue. We've waived rules before. We've had things come to us where something was forgotten to be put on the agenda. Uh, maybe there was a lack of communication, but to cast this as, I think somebody said last night that it was a demand, it was not a demand. I, I don't know if it would be um, appropriate to hear from somebody else um, on this. Because I, by presenting it that way, you're making it sound like, like our backs are being put to the wall by somebody, and that really wasn't the case. There was, as it was explained to us last night, there's normally a public hearing and then it goes on to the next agenda. So I don't know if it's, if, Mr. President, if we could ask Renee to say that, or um, there was miscommunication somehow. I think counsel thought that something had to come from the administration, but that's actually not the way it's, it's worked. And I, when we were asked about conditional use, I did do a lot of research. I mean, uh, there have been a lot, I would think that this is the way other conditional use after public hearings have come on to the agenda because there have been any number of conditional use approvals by council in the past. I'm not sure if it's the most recent one.
Yes. Mr. President, uh, this is Ed Betta. I just wanted to clarify, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with how the agenda items were or were not listed, but your obligation as a council is to hold a public hearing before you can take any action. You've done that. You've done that. The matter is before you. So whether you act on it today, that would be fine. That would require a wave rules. Or you would act on it at the next council meeting, that would be fine. Either way, I don't have any legal concern. The legal concern I had was that you have to have a public hearing before you can take any official action with response to a conditional use. You've had that. So at least procedurally, you have a choice, either do it at this meeting or address it at the next meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I just wanted to clarify, there are two wave rules in front of council, and the one that, that we were talking about first was by the same developer at a different location. I, I think that you might be talking about the second wave rules, which is 8:24, 8:28 West Second. This one is 9:46 West Second, parcel ID 4038114.
The problem with the whole process is the process. Everybody knows the right way to do it. The last we had heard from Mr. Brennan was that he was contacting the developer, and developer had pulled out of the program. So of course we did nothing because there was nothing to do. If that call came in 11:05, then it should have been 11:06 call to all of council, or at least the president and vice president, so we could notify everybody. Two weeks is not gonna kill this deal.
I was gonna say a few words if I could, Mr. President.
Yeah, Mike, we just called for a question. Go ahead.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. I was gonna say, yeah, I did talk to the developer. Yeah, I just kinda wanna know what their plans were, and I did communicate with some council members, but my thought was gonna get on a future agenda. And I, so there was obviously some miscommunications there. But my thought is it would go on a future agenda. I didn't direct the placement on the agenda, but I do, I do support the project. Yeah, I did inform the developer that I thought there was support on council. But, and again, I do have a lot to say about this development, but just about the wave rules, you know, I think if we have support on council, I don't think there's anything going on behind the scenes. I think we can move forward, as Mr. Betza said. So, you know, I don't, I don't know if it'll affect the project. I, I think getting it moving is, is good for this developer. So if we have support, I would support doing this wave of the rules.
All for the vote?
Mr. President? Liz had asked, Liz had asked if I could provide some insight from the administration. I'm not sure how it fell off the agenda. We thought it was still on. We knew there was a question about the developer potentially pulling out, but the owner, who also co-signed the application, wanted to still move forward. And so we thought it was still on the agenda and didn't realize it until yesterday. We didn't know that it had come.
So we're saying that the mayor is all for this project, you're telling us?
Yeah, see, when the planning commission has voted to approve it, we're all on board with it. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I called three times. Mr. Keys wants a call for the vote.
Okay, calling for the vote on wave rules on the first project.
We're doing one wave rules for both of them.
No, no, no. It's two separate.
So I don't believe this is the one that was in question, 9:46 West Second. Waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
No.
Motion fails to adopt for the wave rules, four to three. You need a five vote. Okay, we have another project, a wave rules on the property at 8:24, 8:28 West Second. Voting on waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys?
No.
Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
No. Both of those will be on the next agenda.
No, they'll be. We gotta vote on them. It did not pass. The wave the rules is going through.
The wave rules did not pass.
Okay. Right.
Three to four. So that takes us to committee reports.
Sorry about that.
Committee reports, how about we start Mr. Keys today?
Well, thank you. I was able to attend Airport Authority... I was able to attend the Airport Authority meeting, and I'm happy to say that despite the pandemic, the Airport Authority is healthier than they thought they would be at this juncture. And so things look good. We're hoping traffic, travel comes back and people start returning to the airlines and to the skies.
That's all. That's all today? Okay, Mr. Witherspoon?
No report, sir.
No report? Thank you. Mr. Winarsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Really, the only comment I have this morning is, as a council and an administration, we put alerta in place for a reason. And although there was, took much discussion on what extent of the alerta we were going to put in, whether it be citywide or just up to the Bayfront, we passed something. Part of doing the alert is spurring development. So when you want to get developers here, you want projects to be done, to give them an incentive. The last thing I wanna do when you pass alerta is put up roadblocks to keep development happening. And I understand there was definitely a miscommunication between whether it be the administration, the clerk's office, and city council as a whole. I'm hearing, I'm hearing the president, I'm hearing our vice president. I don't know. Hopefully, two weeks isn't a game changer in this development. No matter what changes are ever done to our city, you're gonna have some people or some citizens that are not going to like the change. But hopefully, in two weeks, we can get everything straightened out, squared away, and determine whether we are going to let, let developers invest in our city and help our city grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Ms. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to talk about that I have been in contact with the EMTA and will be setting up a study session with them. They'll be getting back to me on a time that we can talk about the EMTA. They're running 60 to 65% right now below their normal activity of people on the bus. Last night after the study session was over, I replayed Mr. Betza's words before us, before the public hearing, and he made three comments that we, you know, are definitely allowed to have the public hearing and the vote, but he talked about the issues of the parking, the screening, the protection, preserving the landscape. He talked about the exterior of the building and the lighting, and he talked about the effect of the immediate neighborhood. Now, I live at 43rd and Rice Avenue, but I go down in that area as much as possible. And I have some questions because I also park there pre-COVID. When I go to the concerts, that area does have parking issues. They have huge parking issues, especially the farther one. And I normally don't get a parking area, parking spot on that area when there's concerts and things going on. My concern is strictly public safety for the people in the Wallerstein Apartments. And I know, Liz, you had commented on the developer had, you know, had clarified all of this, but for myself and for past, you know, being there, I, I, it's not about the view for me at all because, you know, I stay at hotels and I look out a window at another hotel. I'm there for the activity, and it's not about the view. It's, that street historically was built as a very narrow street. And you can see that in other places sometimes, you know, you say, gee, why is that house so, so, so close to the sidewalk? And that's because years ago, that house was built away from the road. And now, because of development or whatever, I am not anti-government. I am anti-putting something up if it's not safe. And if there's a fire, and sometimes fires hop on to the next, you know, it's, it's just about safety, and I would like to look into more safety issues at this time. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items I wanted to talk about, the Erie Parking Authority. It has been discussed, the municipal services agreement. And I reported this back in December, but the EPA did submit a proposal back in December that's still being reviewed. So the administration's in the process of still reviewing that, and that the, there will be a meeting coming up soon to, to, to talk about that. So I know several councils...
We all...
I'm sorry?
Is that a private proposal, or can we all see it?
No, we, we haven't seen it. I think it was just from the, I haven't seen, I actually have seen some of the details, but that was sent from the EPA director right to the authority. I think we could share it. We all, we could talk to Renee when she, when she speaks later then, and we'll try to get a copy, if that's, if that's possible.
No problem.
For the West Second Street developments, I always just try to take a deep breath and pause is that I think we're very fortunate. We have a developer who wants to invest in Erie. He has roots in Erie. This is important to him. He has a depth of experience in these type of projects. He's worked in other parts of the country, other projects. He has done his due diligence. We've had a lot of developers come in that, you know, just kinda skimmed by through the details and just tried to get through the process, but he has spent a lot of time working on due diligence and talking to the neighborhood. They made design adjustments, brought in another local architect so that that local experience would be there, that local connection. They improved the design response due to the neighbors' comments and concerns. And again, not every, every comment, every neighbor could be accommodated, and I think, but they've done their best. Not every, every developer could have a perfect project. And because of this planning, the public input process, and because we need new development, I support the project. But also, I wanna take another thought, another step back in that we, I think we need to take a serious look at our development process in our city and kinda put ourselves in their shoes. I mean, we do have a lot of steps to develop an area, and there's a reason for that. We need to ensure that it's a good project. We do ensure it's a fair process. We need to make, at the same time, we need to make it enticing for development. We can't chase people away. And if, if projects get turned down, there needs to be a good, good reason for them. So that's, that's why we're here talking about it. But again, what's real important is we need to take, take development that takes in mind that the neighborhood, and again, they've done that. So we need to do as best for our city. We need new development, we need to attract investors. We need to give those who surround these new developments confidence to continue to invest. So again, we may not always agree, the neighborhoods, many people in the city, but I agree that these, these projects would be good for our city. So we'll, we table it for today, but I'm looking forward to go back on the agenda. Thank you.
It will go on the agenda, David. No problem at all. I tell you, I don't have a problem with those developments. I have a problem with the way it's trying to get shoved down our throat today. That's all.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen as long as we're here now. Council has to have a say on things going on. Ms. Allen, right?
Yes. So I don't wanna belabor the West Second Street. I'm glad to hear Ed say that it, that he supports it and that it will go on the next agenda. I wanna thank Jim for pointing out, for linking this, these two projects with alerta because sometimes that's what gets lost in the process, is that we did something to encourage people to invest, and, you know, this is a way to bring that to fruition. We have a finance committee meeting after this, and, you know, we, we talked last night about our goals, and the council president pointed out that the budget was a common goal, increasing revenue was a common goal. So this fits into that. It's, it's gonna be hard to go to a, a budget session, a finance committee meeting, which basically often just looks at how we did, you know, year-to-date and, and how we looked compared to 2020, but we also have to look forward. So I, I get the sense that there is enough support for this to be passed at the next meeting. Let's hope that it all comes together. On some other topics, I am not the liaison to the Human Relations Commission, but I am alarmed at, I'm gonna use the word shenanigans that went on at the last meeting to bring in a new board chair. The city contributes to the HRC budget, and in terms of whether people who are waiting to have their complaints heard are getting their money's worth, I think that is something that we need to look at. We now have a link to that meeting. I haven't had a chance to watch that meeting, but I will. Is that, it's a nice ringtone. I wanted to say that I have registered, one of the other things that, a broader goal from council members that we talked about last night was talking about neighborhoods. Fits in nicely with the active transportation plan that we adopted. I did register for the Groundworks USA workshop that's coming up next Monday. You can attend some or all of it, so I'm looking forward to that. Groundworks is the program which will be helping on like youth and, and job training development, I believe, in helping to revitalize our neighborhoods. And I had one other thing, oh, two other things. One is, one of my goals that I shared with council was to make sure that we're able to take advantage of the technology tools that, that we're still learning because of COVID, so that we can continue to use them even when we're able to safely gather again because I think it really helps with citizen engagement. And I was very excited to learn that Frank Stramila, the media strategist for the city of Erie, is going to be doing some Zoom training for city hall employees. So I think that'll be really useful. We can learn how to screen share because I think visuals are, are really important as we, as we debate some of the things that come before council. And my, my other comment is in terms of goals, we talked about civilian review board a little bit last night. I, it struck me when we heard the, the work of the Historic Preservation Task Force that that might be a vehicle to get us to look at equity and inclusion as a broader goal and also bring it home for the civilian review board. So I hope the council will think about that, think about what we learned from Historic Preservation Task Force. Think about what we learned from Historic Preservation Task Force and figure out what the tool is to help us become uh address issues of equity and inclusion. Including civilian review board in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just to tag on to Councilwoman Allen. I observed the meeting of the Human Relation Commission. And I went to my Robert's Rules of Order book. They were totally out of context in what they did. It was if they follow Robert Rules of Order. What they did was, let's say illegal, nothing you can take to court, but illegal, it was wrong. I think it was set up. Once you vote in a president and it's not contested prior to the meeting going on, then it's too late to go back and change it. And the Ms. Pulliam ran the meeting for about five minutes, other reports, etc. And then it came up that someone I voted wrong. And so I'm putting together a letter which I'm going to send to Doug Smith. And since it came up in council meeting, I will make sure all the council get a copy as well. Thank you for that, Liz.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah. If I could take a second, I know I'm speaking out of turn, but I also am outraged at the way that that meeting was carried out. And and I think there's something that does need to be done. And I can say I would like to co-sponsor that letter when you get it drafted.
Yes, sir.
Mel, if and if you want others to sign on, I would sign on. I'm happy to to be part of that also. Not happy might not be the right word, but I am ready to join you.
Well, let me do this. Let me put the letter together, send it to council. And if you want to add or take away to make it as perfect as possible. Then do that and then I'll send it to Doug Smith over at the county.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you are muted. I believe you were trying to speak.
You are muted.
So you you muted yourself and then unmuted yourself, then muted yourself again.
Ms. Lamis, you're up.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I just have five things that I'll talk about. First of all, you know, on this the issue of this two properties, we weren't trying to shove anything down anybody's throat. Just to reiterate, we thought that they were on agenda. We had not from the mayor's office directed them to be removed from the agenda. I'm not sure how that happened. In fact, the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance for the Historic Preservation Historic Review Commission was also not on this agenda. It was also a public hearing two weeks ago. We thought all three of those things were going to be on this agenda. So we need that to be on the 17th as well because that's necessary for us to pass that in order to get the CLG status and the CLG grant so that we can move forward. And you'll see that Kathy Rosdick sent you an email about that this morning also, if you didn't see it already. So I don't know what happened, but I think going forward, we do need to figure out exactly what the process is and make sure that everybody.
We know the Thursday before the Wednesday meeting, the agenda should be sent in. This way we can review it. I'm not blaming anybody, but I'll I'll take the blame for it. It's our office.
Well, I'm not trying to blame anybody. I just historically, they've always gone on automatically after a public hearing. And if there were issues.
The issue was that the developer said he wasn't going to do it.
But but the owner, the owner wanted to continue and we didn't ask for it to be pulled from the agenda. So I don't, you know, I just, I just want to make sure.
It is what it is.
Yeah, I I just want to make sure that going forward, we we don't allow that to happen again because this is
Your darn right.
A really important project. You know, as as Councilman Winarsky brought up, LERTA. You know, the reason, the whole reason we put that in place is because if we're going to get out of the situation that we're in in the city, we need to expand the tax base. We can continue to just raise taxes on our residents year after year after year. But our costs for everything go up too. So, you know, salt costs more and it costs more to pave streets and it costs more to drop off garbage. You know, it costs more for tipping fees. All these things increase every year. And the only way we're going to get out of this is if we expand the tax base. Those two projects would have brought in all in for the county, the school district and the city. After the LERTA rolls off, probably around $120,000 to $130,000 extra a year. Every
Still going to, ready? Just two weeks later.
I hope so. I mean, I I hope that's the case. But it's but he's been working on this for well over a year. Though I know that when it came on your agenda, it might have been new to you, but he's been working on this for a very long time. So the second thing is the 200,000 IT grant for the code enforcement. I just want to, I know Fred Tepfer brought up some questions. And I just wanted to quickly clarify, we need to improve our IT for code enforcement because it right now, the process is extremely inefficient. And historically, what has happened is that HUD has changed their regulations over the years. And in order to reimburse our code enforcement officers with CDBG funding. They have to go to residences. And the code enforcement officers have to acknowledge some issue of like. So just quickly, if we get a call and somebody says that a property has high grass. The only way we can get HUD to reimburse the code enforcement officer's time is if when they go out to look at the high grass, they find something else wrong with the property, which they can take a photo of and document and go back to the office and enter it into three different pieces of software to record it and track it and 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 make the case to HUD that this should be reimbursable. They don't reimburse for commercial properties or industrial properties. So because we were relying on CDBG funding to pay for our code enforcement officers. That's historically been a challenge. We're we're working around that now. And we've already started to send code enforcement officers out to commercial and residential properties. But that's going to, that's going to cost the general fund. So, you know, there are trade offs here and there are things that we need to fix. Part of the $200,000 grant in helping us fix the IT is we'll be able to increase our efficiency and freed up free up the time of our code enforcement officers so that they can be a little bit more proactive. The third thing Dave Brennan brought up, the Erie Parking Authority, we are moving on that. It's it's been difficult. We've had people out sick. We've had people out with surgeries. But we're trying to schedule an internal meeting for the week of February 17th, sometime during that week. And I can, if you want, what what I have from Christopher Friday is an overview of the Lancaster Parking Authority and how that functions. And then a kind of an addendum from Christopher of an estimate for what that might mean for Erie if we picked up the same kind of model. So I can forward that to all of you. Fourth, the authorities, boards and commissions, I just wanted to let you all know, we we've left that open because we were having issues with the website. And people could not get into the website to learn more about the authorities, boards and commissions before deciding to apply. But I'm just, we still need to decide how you want me to forward you the applications and the resumes, I think. For if I'm sending them to the people who are appointing the different who appointing to the different authorities, boards and commissions or how that's how that's going to work.
I think it'll work kind of simply. If the council person wants that list. Then that council person will call and get the list from you. If they have people that they are going to appoint, then they don't need the list. It's one of the few things council has the ability to do. Besides the budget, we do have the ability to assign people to the different committees and things. So what you're doing is a wonderful thing, right? And it's a great thing to have a
So I think we should just if I would send the council's presidents of permission. We'll set up just a framework to send it to whoever the liaison or the contact is for that particular authority or committee.
Right.
Okay, because the the executive directors of the authorities have indicated the skill sets that they need. That they have gaps. And so that's why we did that so that we could actually find people who had those those skills or that expertise.
Especially helpful for new people.
Yes.
Coming on council.
And and I just wanted to ask, David, we do have a resolution that we approved that we should be advertising for these. So if we're going to say, well, we're going to look at that list, except if you already have somebody in mind, doesn't that go against the spirit of the resolution we passed, which said that we were committed to advertising for all the openings? David, would you be able to find our or maybe Lori can find that resolution that we that we approved on boards and authorities?
Let's take a look at it. Good point.
Yeah, it definitely needs to be advertised and let people know about definitely.
But I'm saying that I thought I heard that that we should look at the list, except if we already have somebody in mind. But I thought that we had agreed that we would advertise for all of them. It shouldn't be like, hey, I already know I'm going to appoint somebody, so I don't need to look at the list. I think I think we need to be consistent in looking at the list. And perhaps you look at the list and you say, you know what, there really isn't anybody on here who meets the the needs of that particular board, so I have somebody else in mind. But I think looking at the list should be the first thing, not the not the fallback is would be my contention from what we had actually approved as council members.
Yeah, actually a good point.
Look at the resolution.
The bottom line is that if we have somebody who has already been on there and the executive director would want them to be re-upped, then there's no need to look other places. We have a a full service person working there. This is my first year on here, Liz. I got to catch up to you. I don't know what's going on out there. And having a list of people to look at is a great idea too. I'm not downing it. I'm just saying that there are situations where Mr. Boytek or whoever it might be might say, you know, I've had this person for the last couple of years and he's doing a great job. I know the water authority has a big learning curve. There's a lot of things going on over there. So it's
That's true. Just just to clarify, I talked to all the executive directors before I post the openings. And when they say that they have a board member that's working, I don't post that as a vacancy. We just renewed that. So.
Thank you.
Yep. And then the last
Do it on behalf of council, though she renews it on behalf of the mayor.
Right. Yeah. And then and then usually the executive director tells me they're going to reach out to the council person who appointed. And to see if they'd be willing to. And I know that happened, I think, with you, Councilman Winarsky. And then and then you renewed. And I know Dave Brennan renewed, you know, the airport authority appointment. So that that does, that happens. We I like to defer to the executive directors because they know what they need. And we want to help them succeed and help us, you know, build opportunity, restore hope and transform Erie, right? And they need the right people on board to be able to help them do that. So then just quickly, the last thing I wanted to mention, the focus of tomorrow's press conference is on the implementation of the Secure Smart City into the opportunity zone. So we're just going to provide an update on that. And that's all I have for today. Thanks, everybody.
We're doing that at one o'clock on Thursdays from now on?
No, different press conference.
That's a different press conference.
That's the press conference that the mayor has at 10 a.m. on Thursdays. But yeah, we'll move the debriefs to one o'clock.
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you want to start that this week or next week?
Whatever the good the order. Folks, what do you think? Start right away? I guess, yeah, go ahead. That'd be easier for everybody.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Okay, anybody? Teresa, are you here?
I am here. The only thing is next week, there'll be a pension board meeting with the quarterly reports for the pension funds. And once I get that information, I'll forward it on to council. And that's all that I have.
Super. Thank you. Anybody else? Mayor? Nope. I promised a walking neighbor that I would try to show this picture. I hope you could see it because this is a weather phenomenon. If you can, can I see my picture?
Yep. Back it up a little bit.
Back it up a little bit. All that snow is on a city road on Hilltop. If you look up at the top, somehow in Mill Creek, it didn't snow. We have a lot of neighbors who walk their dogs and things like that around the neighborhood. And they're a little bit upset because we have the Baja roads in the city. But the minute you go into Mill Creek and you can look at West Arlington, you look at a lot of the roads that do that. All of a sudden, the Mill Creek roads are clean. I got to talk to Flint and find out that there's some kind of a meteorological phenomenon going on.
Well, the the money that they short us on, they probably bought an extra truck or two.
Yeah, well said. Well said, Mr. Witherspoon. All right. At least I didn't get in trouble. I told the neighbors I would show that. I don't have anything, again, that want to belabor it. We are all for proper development. We know that. But we are also on protocol. There are rules that have to be followed by everybody. Once in a while is an emergency. But at 11 o'clock in the morning call from an out of town developer that hits us at seven o'clock at night is not the proper way to go about anything. And I will live and die on that sword, I guess. And I think for the good of the order, we're done.
We're done.
Say good night.
City council adjourns at 11:01 a.m. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mr. Shoff, Mr. Winarsky.
I'll call Lipton Walter. She where he's at.
Paul is online at this time. I see him. Hi, Paul. Paul, how are you doing?
We were looking for you. That's all, buddy.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye.
Are we starting finance right now? Or are we taking a break or what?
I think maybe we're taking a break.
It looks like we don't have everybody. Kathy, when are we going to start?
I have no idea. I have I have to go to work as soon as the finance meeting is over with. I don't, so the sooner the better for me.
It's 11:03.
It seems like those who are in City Hall are not at their devices.
I'm not at City Hall, so.
Kathy, what time do you have to be at work? At noon?
I just told them as soon as the meeting was over with, I would come in. They they need me.
They, they need me.
You wanted to just take five minutes, but then start at? 11:08 or 11:10 that?
What? It's 11 something now, so, um, so.
I'll tell them three minutes here.
Jim, 11:10?
I'll tell them three minutes, Eddie and Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Three minutes. Uh, they got, um. Appointments at noon, so they're trying to expedite. No, there was, there was speculation.
Kathy, it's 11:09, so we're getting close. Um, how do we call the people back into their seats? Text one of them? Can you, can you text Michael or, or somebody and say, we're ready? Oh, Jim's here. Alright, he got back in time.
Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, just wanna make sure. I, I did some of the buttons again. I just wanna make sure. I'll get this figured out, uh, with Frank later.
I lost Eddie and Mike for a while with TV, so I, uh, according to Ed, he said, uh, we can start the finance and he'll catch up.
Alright, if, uh.
Paul is with us.
Paul's ready.
I think he went to another floor. I think he went to make a visit, but.
I see Paul. Paul's on.
Okay.
I'm off mute now.
Paul, we can hear you now.
Okay. Um, I don't know if everybody's got a chance to look at all the stuff. We've been sending out since last week, so I don't, I don't know where we wanna go, um, with the meeting today as far as going over the numbers. But I guess the email that, uh, we sent out last night, I think we sent it yesterday afternoon, or no, yesterday morning. Um, shows normally what we do is we give you the highlights. There's four or five, five pages of the highlights of accounts that had material movements to them. And then we gave you a, uh, a collection of history on the real estate taxes, just showing how we did last year. And then our biggest one, you know, the real estate taxes, I think we were all a little nervous last March, April, May about the collections when the COVID pandemic hit us. And also with our income tax collections. So we put together, uh, a little chart. Which would be the seventh page on what we collected and how the money was collected. Um, and kinda comparing it to what the unemployment rates. Uh, were for the second and third quarter, knowing those collections come a quarter after.
Yeah, it's in here.
Oh, Jimmy. Okay.
That's alright, I'm sorry.
Um, and then I just had Chris put together a little, uh, update on how we did. We had a very, very, very good year last year with, uh. Health insurance and workers comp. So I thought that was something of note to look at. So. I guess, and then I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at the 83 page, the, the normal, uh. The normal summary, but let me just go through the summary first. And then if there's any questions, um. We can go back to that. But the first thing in, uh, the summary document, which is this one. Uh, the very first page is the monthly summary for the general fund. And that shows that we ended the year, uh, about a half a million dollars to the negative. Which is much, much better than when we were projecting in back in June and July, the mid-year report. We were figuring we were gonna be about $3 million short. Um, and again, going back to. You know, everybody was projecting these unemployment statistics to be a lot higher than they actually ended up being. Uh, so our, our taxes. Um, are, the collections are down a little bit, but they're nowhere near the negative that we thought they were going to be. Um, going down those, that list, and I, I guess, I, I could ask if anybody has specific line item questions, but. The biggest one is, is the taxes. I mean, that's where almost 70, 70, 75% of our money comes from. And that's why I wanted those, those charts in the other grouping, the PDF file that you got. Shows where those changes were, where the, where the positives and negatives happened, but, you know.
Paul, I had, I had wondered, do you think that that supplemental unemployment insurance helped with the taxes? Um, remember, you know, there were people who were getting, you know, an additional XX, $600 per week. And there will be, the, the most recent COVID package that's already passed has some additional in it, so. I don't know. I don't know if you've seen anything about that, but I would think that that might have helped. Some people with property taxes and, you know, there is COVID relief now and could be more, so.
Yeah, that very well could have, but, um, going back to the, the, the realis, the, the real estate taxes before we hit. On the, um, the, uh. Income taxes, you know, we collected 91% of the levy last year, which was the same as in 18. And then, or in 19 and 18, 17, 16, it's always hung around 90 to 91%. So 1% increase is good. I mean, that's a, a 3, 4, $500,000 increase in the collection, so it very well could have. Helped if, you know, if I got that extra $600, uh, a week for unemployment. Instead of owing the 10% penalty plus interest, you know, maybe I, I, I'd wanna pay my in, or my real estate taxes as far as that goes.
Paul, where do we get that, uh, half million, um. From though to balance the deficit then?
Well, that, that will come out of the fund balance, the cash in bank. Normally at the end of the year, um, we'll have anywhere between. 10 to 14 million dollars in cash in the bank. So we'll just start the year less. Like the year before, we had about a $300,000 positive, so that money just stayed in the bank account.
Okay.
Uh, if I can comment, uh, if I'm correct, we had set aside $3 million to cover that, uh, deficit. That is only gonna be, uh. Half million dollar deficit. Am I correct in that?
Michael, yes, you're correct there. That, that money does not show up here in, in the monthly summary report as a revenue or expenditure. It was just an appropriation of the fund balance. It was just giving us the ability to use the cash in case we needed it.
But was that from fund balance or was that from water lease money?
Well, it was from water lease money that was appropriated. When we got that 97 million. We appropriated $2.5 million right off the bat so that we wouldn't have to do that tax lien sale. That was appropriated into fund balance. And then a couple of weeks later, we then appropriated another $3.5 million into fund balance. So that money's all in, that money's all in cash in bank. So when, when we get the CAFR done. You'll see that at the end of 2019, we had about $10 million in the bank.
You in?
At the end of 2020, we're gonna have about $13 million in the bank account.
Okay. Well, we definitely want to, uh. Keep that in our sights also.
And I'm not saying $13 million isn't a lot of money, but, um, you know, I always go back to the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association. Where they say we should have a couple months, a couple months worth of money in the bank, so we should really have 15, 16 million. In cash in the bank at any one time to be safe, so, you know. Take that with a grain of salt. It is good to have 13 million in, in the bank as a just in case. So, um, I guess going down the list, and I'm gonna follow the general fund highlights, but you, you'll see the attached to real estate taxes where you see that. Our collections were just about where they normally are. Our income taxes, uh, those, those are the last.
Yes.
Sheet six, seven or eight. Um, the, the LST taxes for the year were down about 4%. And actually for the second half of the year, which coincides with the unemployment rate that the. The United States government put out, we were down about 10% in LST tax. Over about $108,000 in comparing last year to the years before. For those last, you know, the last two quarters of the year. But then, looking at that chart, the very oddity was the earned income tax. Which is the regular tax, not the special pension levy. But our earned income tax collections were actually up 5%. Uh, in the third and fourth quarter of the year. So. The best we can figure out and Burkeheimer's, you know, looking into this, I talked to Bill Leonard to try to figure out what happened. Um, it was more of the, the lower paying job people that were laid off. Uh, during the, the height of the pandemic. And, uh, people got raises last year. So, uh, we'll, we'll have a better understanding of, of that once Burkeheimer can analyze all of the. End of 2020 information, but yeah, that, it, from, from what we know and what we've heard about, you know, the unemployment. We did collect more in earned income tax money last year than, than we had previous. And then the, uh, the final on that sheet with the income tax collections, the special levy. Was down for the second half of the year about 6.5%, uh, which we kinda knew because a lot of. A lot of the companies that had working from home people that don't live in the city, obviously, once that second quarter ended, um. They don't, they, you know, based on the state rules, they don't have to pay that extra special levy tax. So we were down a little bit there. Too. But let, again, 6.5% is less than the unemployment rate or the LST. Uh, negative of 9.5%. So were people getting raises there too that kinda made up for, uh, the loss of. What we should have collected or would have collected if people were working in their buildings in the city of Erie.
Paul?
Yes.
The earned income tax that say we lost out of, uh, say for Erie Insurance. Where they were working from home, and I'll just throw Mill Creek out there. Did Mill Creek get to collect that tax then?
No, they don't. That's a tax, that's, that's a special tax for just us, that extra 0.18%.
So with that being said. The employee got the break?
Yes, correct.
At our expense?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, normally they would pay, if I, if I lived in Mill Creek and worked in the city, I would pay, um, 1.18%. I would pay 0.5% to my school district, 0.5% to my, to Mill Creek, to my, my township. And then the 0.18% stays in the city as a special pension levy tax.
Okay. I didn't know going into a new year and with the COVID still going on. If there was something they could change our representatives in the state to help us. But, uh. If that's actually helping the citizens in a different way, I guess we gotta go with it.
Yeah, that would be, that would be one for the state reps, as you just said.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Paul, um, I know that the amusement tax is forecast, you know. Um, way down, you know, in terms of budget, but are you still comfortable? But are you still comfortable with the number we have in there? I, I'm thinking about the fact that um, you know, we, we aren't gonna have the G League this year at all. Um, I think MLB is actually gonna start a little bit later. So uh, the uh, you know, minor league baseball is gonna be pushed off and who knows how many fans will be allowed. But are you still comfortable with the hundred thousand?
You know, Liz, we collected that, that last year as, as bad as things were. So, you know, hopefully I, I don't have the crystal ball, but boy, I hope, I, I, I mean, based on the fact that we collected a hundred thou, a hundred eight thousand last year, I would hope that everything, you know, with, 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 you know, people taking the vaccine and things opening up a little bit. Yeah, I, I hoped, I hope that works out.
Okay, we, I think we should just keep looking at it every month. Um, I don't know what's gonna happen with OHL. And uh, you know, I mean, it's one thing to even have games, but if there aren't bodies in the seats, that's where the revenue comes from. But I, I just think we should, it, it's not one of our larger revenue items, but I just think we, we need to keep tabs on it carefully.
No, agreed, because I mean, even a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars is still a hundred thousand dollars. Um, going down then, going down some of the other general fund uh, items. The realty transfer taxes, even though the, that industry lost about a month and a half of how, home sales was equal to the year before, two thousand nineteen. Um, the amusement tax, Liz touched on that. Uh, building permits and inspections, those lagged a little behind because that's another industry last year that lost, I think from, you know, the middle of March until the beginning of May or so. So hopefully we'll get a bounce back there. Uh, rental licenses, collections lagged a little bit behind last year. Uh, parking fines, boot fines, uh, were a little bit behind what we budgeted, but equal in comparison to what they had been the year before. And really that, when, when you look at the general fund, when you get a chance to look through the full book and look at your general fund revenues, uh, everything pretty much fell in place with where it had been the year before or where we had budgeted things. So, um, I wanted to talk then about the, the expenses uh, in, in the general fund. And uh, as the mayor talked about multiple times throughout the year at various, you know, meetings, we, we did save some money in, in expenses. Uh, overtime was down, both police and fire. Uh, salaries were less than budgeted. Our, our bad one last year was our employee payouts. Normally, and if you look back through your last five, six, seven years of budget books, we normally pay about six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars a year in payouts. And unfortunately, last year, you know, we, we were over uh, two million dollars in employee payouts last year. And that's, that's, you know, the contractual agreements that have been made through the police and fire negotiations that it just, it was the worst year we've ever had as far as that goes. Um, office supplies, operating supplies, fluids, repair maintenance, all, all pretty much down from the year before. Uh, when you look at your summary, the, the one uh, line item that did go into the negative last year was our professional services in the uh, general government. And the, the, I know that sounds like a bad thing, but actually most of that money is spent to our um, our collection service, our tax collection service, which is Berchheimer. And the contract that the county negotiates with Berchheimer, um, you, you know, we, we pay them based on what they collect. So the more that they collect, the more that we pay them. So to spend more money there is actually good because we've now um, collected more. And looking down through the rest of the general fund, everything, everything pretty much stayed underneath um, underneath what we had budgeted. And I know one member of council had asked me also uh, yesterday or Monday, I don't remember which day. Uh, there, there is another negative in there. Uh, the EMTA, and I know during the meeting, we had talked about EMTA and also the parking authority and what's going on with those two. But the EMTA, um, you know, we have, we have, their articles of incorporation say that uh, if they're short in their budget in any year, uh, you know, we're on the hook for sixty percent of where we're short each year. So uh, last year due to their ridership being down, the revenues being down, they needed some extra money last year. So uh, we were, we were asked to contribute about a hundred seventy-five, it was actually a hundred seventy-three, but let's call a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars more to their budget than we, than we had budgeted. And also they're asking for, as you know from the budget sessions, they're asking for a couple dollars more for this coming year, two thousand twenty-one.
Paul, does the county help offset that?
Yes, they do.
Shortfall?
Yes, they're, they're on the hook for forty percent of us, us sixty percent.
Okay.
Oh, I have a question. This is Dave Brennan.
Pardon?
I, I had a question, Paul?
Yes.
The um, i- is there a worksheet that you give us that kind of shows how much this has gone up throughout the years? And um, maybe a clarification of, of the agreement? Um, yeah, I'm sure you shared it before in the past councils, but uh, I know it's gone up substantially.
I, yeah, I can put together, um, you know, one, one line. I mean, actually it was Jimmy that called me the other day. I mean, I can go back five, six years ago, we were giving him a quarter of a million dollars. Um, but you know, that things were a little bit better then. Yeah, David, I'll, I'll get something together with you. I know somewhere in my office I have the article, articles of incorporation, um, and you know.
Paul, could you send that to all of council?
Yeah, we'll send that out.
If you would please.
Yep.
And again, I, I just want to understand what the terms are. Uh, and just to, um, because we get often get questions about that. And, and if we um, understand it, then we can explain it. And um, uh, just make sure it's, it's, that's fair for the residents of Erie.
And I do, I do believe their charter may be coming up again for renewal. And how that all fits into the big picture here is something for us to look at also.
Yeah, I can send you the email I just found. They, you know, I, I did question them about this back in October and they, you know.
They did their homework where we.
Yes, they sent me the articles of, articles incorporation and it's, it's spelled right out here that uh, the apportion fifty-five percent city, forty-five county after any local match entities are determined. And I mean, they're, they're hanging their hat on this. So, and it, and it was signed by them and us and, you know, so it's there. I'll sa, I'll send this stuff out though today.
Kathy, what was the dollar amount that Mill Creek had done matching funds and then they dropped it or they cut it?
Mill Creek dropped their uh, monies by ninety percent. They um, at this time are paying two thousand five hundred dollars, which is just about what the West County at Lake City is paying.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. They.
And all the service that does go to Mill Creek, I know you sent a little email out in response yesterday. It just doesn't seem fair or right that uh, they shortchanged the matching funds and then it ends up costing the city and the county as a whole more monies because of the EMTA shortfall then.
Yes, and as someone who rode the bus pre-pandemic, um, you know, I tried to tell Mill Creek supervisors that it's not just, you know, when people in the city ride the bus, they're going to the stores at the Mill Creek Mall to spend money and to work there. So they are contributing to the um, you know, Mill Creek's economy. And it's amazing to me that, that in this age, when we talk so much about regional cooperation, that Mill Creek could be show, so shortsighted in realizing, um, you know, who depends on uh, Mill Creek, uh, on EMTA bus service. So, you know, we spoke at a meeting, but that was maybe a year and a half ago, I think. Jeremy Peterson had encouraged some council members to go to the supervisors' meeting. Um, I don't know if there needs to be a bully pulpit thing here, but yeah, they're, they're, you know, EMTA has financial woes. It's, it's gonna hurt Mill Creek too. So they need to understand that.
I know Kathy had mentioned uh, getting another study session with Jeremy Peterson. Um, maybe we can do that a little sooner and he can enlighten us. The Mill Creek impact on not paying their fair share. And if it's gonna affect ridership in Mill Creek itself or even city residents going to Mill Creek to those jobs or those stores.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, maybe we should try as a group to go to one of their meetings. Not to cause any disturbance. Matter of fact, we don't have to say anything. Our presence will say it. But uh, we can have uh, one person speak for all of us or we just go as a group because they'll wonder why we're there.
Good point, good point. It's a small room too, so there's no way they're gonna miss us. That's for sure.
If they let us in, they're, they're in the pandemic also.
That's true.
I mean, we could, we could probably uh, find out how they allow attendees by Zoom, so.
It's an idea too. Are we talking about trying to set up a study session for that EMTA?
I'm on it, thank you. Um, I'm in correspondence with them. They're looking at their schedule. They'll get, um, they're getting back to me.
Good girl. Tell them we have the schedule too. I'm kinda getting tired of being at the bottom of the pile.
I let them know, I, I let them know that we have Tuesday and Thursday studies.
I'm surly today, Kath, I'm sorry. But I don't like us being taken advantage of. They'll, they'll make time for us.
For the study session, it might be better to just appoint two or three members of council to reach out to the supervisors and just have a meeting. And present, you know, what we've heard from the EMTA and let them present, let Mill Creek just present what, whatever they're, you know, whatever they're thinking and then just talking through.
I think Mr. Morgan tried to be a hero, Ren. That's all it was. He's, he was the one that orchestrated that cut with the idea that Mill Creek people don't use the bus. Never thought about the idea that Liz mentioned about all the people going to the Mill Creek Mall from, from the city on buses. And so it's.
I think we should uh, meet with Mr. Peterson first and then uh, like I said, get more of the uh, ramifications of what their uh, matching funds is equal to in the big picture.
Good point.
And that approach, Mill Creek.
Okay. Okay, Kath, it's in your hands. We, we know you'll do a good job with us. There you are.
I'm.
There you are. You can do it.
Well, unfortunately, um, some people still have stigmas about bus um, ridership and things like that. And at one time, um, the people at the Mill Creek Mall didn't want the bus coming into the mall property. And so the bus had to drop the people off on Peach Street and they had to walk to the mall. But then the employees who were using the bus were complaining that they had to walk this distance to get to work. I mean, because it's, you know, in inclement weather, that is, you know, so uh, it, the bus then did fortunately was able to be reinstated after people complained. So once again, the people's voice does matter. So it's very important if people have um, something to say that they make sure their voice is heard.
Another good point. Anything else for the good order here, folks? There ain't nothing. Paul, thank you very much.
I have something, Paul.
Yeah.
I have a hard time um, reading things. So the paper copy is, is my best way. I apologize for the waste of paper.
No, no problem. Do, um, well, you're downtown a lot. I'll, I'll, we'll start making copies of everything and putting them in your boxes too, okay? Or, or.
Yeah, Paul, I talked at the meeting, the city council meeting about the fact that we're gonna have some Zoom training. So I think if we can have um, screen sharing for, because that report that you gave, um, the eight-page part of it with all the highlights was really um, functional and easy to navigate. But I think if we have it on a screen, we know where you're at and uh, that, that would be really helpful.
We'll do that.
Thanks.
And then as we were talking, I'd sent out, I sent over the municipal service agreement between us and the um, bus company. So then David, I'll get those numbers for you this afternoon.
And Paul, when you get to my copy, could you uh, increase the font for me, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then the last two things, I, oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to hit on the uh, sewer fund and the refuse fund. Um, both the sewer fund and the refuse fund turned into negative last year. The sewer fund was a couple hundred thousand dollars, which, you know, when you're doing twenty-six million dollars a year in billings, that, that can be just about a timing issue. But i- in this case, um, the, the city charges, which include our houses and also like the schools and nonprofits and governments and everybody, those were, those were down last year. And that's kind of obvious based on the fact, you know, the school district had, had no, they were, the schools were closed. So um, but, but Basil did a good job keeping his expenditures down. And the refus, you know, collections were down in here, but the billings were exactly the same uh, two thousand twenty to two thousand nineteen. So it's just a matter of timing on people paying. So, um, you're gonna see that the, you know, that there was, and I think this is important to note, and it could be because of COVID and everybody, you know, not being able to go places and do things. But the, the service charges in the refuse fund, the tipping fees were, you know, exponentially higher. And I know we, we, or you, we all as a group approved a, a new contract on the refuse tipping fees, but the tonnage, we keep track along with the dollars we're spending. We keep track of the tonnage that's being picked up each week. The tonnage that was picked up last summer was a lot higher than it normally is too. So people were cleaning out their houses. So when you see that, that, that's, that's the biggest thing with those tipping fees is yes, they did go up, but there was also a lot more usage last year than there had been in prior years.
Paul, what are our delinquents in the garbage currently?
Uh, if you want me to.
If you know.
Just bear with me for one second. I can go to the last report. Sewer refuse. Sorry, Jim, I gotta get that. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get into the right screen.
Paul, is it okay if I make a comment while you're looking for that on something um back to the tipping fees? I am thinking that um, I think you're right. People were, we still are confined to home. We're getting rid of stuff. I know there was that really successful um kind of free thing where you could donate to three different groups. Um they set up in back of the library. And now we have the, you know, the, you can have your big items picked up, but I'm wondering, I'm not trying to put anything more on Renee's plate, but I think that maybe like a freecycle day or something where instead of, you know, throwing that stuff away, um I don't know if I would pick up something for somebody's house right now because of COVID, but maybe we maybe we need to do a little bit deeper dive into that and to figure out, is there a way to um you know, help people get some of that stuff instead of going to the landfill somewhere else? I don't know who, who else might have gone to that, but it was a great event where you could donate um bedding, uh all kinds of stuff. I think there were three different groups that came together. So if that's on the radar, again, let's make sure that city residents know and that they also know that ultimately, we're gonna end up paying if more stuff is going to the transfer station. So I ca- I can find out about when that, that, that donation thing was, but I know other places do have, you know, freecycle days where you can pick up stuff. So it does, and then we don't want it left on the curb to become a mess, but maybe we need to let people know that um how those tipping fees went up because of COVID. That's a really interesting um sociological trend. You know, who would have known that, that we'd end up paying for that? We're paying for COVID in so many ways. Another way we're paying.
Jim, the answer to your question is uh at the end of December, nine hundred sixty thousand dollars in delinquents for the garbage.
So they went up a little bit?
About a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred fifty thousand dollars or so.
And do we know what percentage of that is on a payment plan?
No, I, I, I'm just reading you the, the uh, the trial.
Just the delinquent, okay.
Yeah, just the delinquent number.
So I think before our next finance meeting uh
Yeah, I can find that out and give you a little bit more detail on there.
Appreciate that, sir. Well, folks, I gotta get to work.
Thank you, Paul. Do you, any, does anyone else have anything to say too? I have to go to work.
Obviously, any questions or anything, please call me, please send me an email. You know, we'll, once you get a chance to look through everything, we'll get, you know, we'll get, we'll get you answers on all this stuff.
Kind of back to EMTA, Kathy, we were talking about Mill Creek, but since this a burden is also gonna fall on the county, I, what did somebody say, sixty, forty? Maybe it would be good to reach out to um a county council person who is a liaison to EMTA. Um you know, have some of that regional cooperation that's so important. And as Renee suggested, you know, wait till the, till we hear from Jeremy, but I think it'd be good to maybe have strength in numbers in tackling this.
Yes, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Good.
All right, if no one else has anything to say, um thank you very much for your time and attention and welcome back, Paul. It's good to see your face. Sorry, I didn't send you a get well soon card.
That's fine, thank you.
Take care, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thank you.